Good evening, members. Welcome to our June 18, 2019 meeting. And if I would ask Goddard to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Goddard.
You're welcome.
Okay.
I move we accept the minutes of May 21st.
So moved.
Okay. Any comments, questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none, thank you.
I move we accept the minutes of June 4th.
So moved.
Any comments, questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, thank you. At this time, if there's anybody in the audience with any new business that's not on the agenda, now's your opportunity to address us. Please go to the micro-- please go to the microphone and introduce yourself.
Here.
Are you with him?
Oh, no, sorry.
I'm sorry. I recognized him first. You'll be next. He got his hand up faster than you did.
First of all, I want to thank you for hearing me this evening and the situation. I am here on the behest of some residents at 360 Andover Street, Rose Court. And the problem is, the--
Did you say your name, sir?
John Brown.
Thank you.
Yes. Yeah, the church, the Great Rock, they've come down, they've got two facilities. They got a brand new one down, and they had one before. And what they're doing is they have a lumber thing where they work and they send, they heat their buildings, they got three buildings that they heat this lumber with. They also send some down to Haiti. But in the meantime, it's very disruptive to where we live. And like, I'm only 100 feet from this operation. And they can cut wood according to the bylaws of Danvers from 7:00 in the morning to 7:00 PM at night. Right now, they're not doing that. They've come up with some agenda that they say they will only do it from 8:00 to 1:30. They will try to do it that way. But for some people in the building, you know, not everyone works days. We got people that work nights. They try to sleep during the day. It's impossible. They can't do it. And the site itself is, it looks terrible. And like I say, I bought four years ago. And it was beautiful there. It had a nice quaint church, so to speak. And it was very nice. Now they've come down and it's an absolute mess. It's noisy, and there's no cooperation between them and ourselves, a little bit, not much. I will state that the lawyers were concerned about a gift shop there. I could care less about a gift shop. They're trying to find out what the zoning is and, you know, things according to that, they're trying to get this thing squared away. But they never addressed the real problem of what's going on. They come in with these, I got pictures in my phone, don't have to see them tonight, but they got logs all over the place. They got two trailers, they got campers, and it, I live right next door to that, and it is, it is a mess. And the biggest concern is the noise. And it was never like that, and why, they had an area where they worked. They said it wasn't big enough to do what they want to do. And we called the town, and no disrespect to the town, but all they tell us is, we can't do anything about that. Wow. Why? We can't discuss it. We can't help you. They can't help us. The church does things with impunity. They do basically whatever they want. They got three guys running chainsaws, they're splitting the wood, they got trucks coming in, picking up the wood, going in and out. And basically, the quality of life stinks. It's not good. I bought four years ago, like I say, and it was, I thought it was going to be a great place. Not the whole complex is affected. The people in the back that are but the work in the church, it's a miserable existence. You never know. I mean, it's arbitrary with them. And the town says there's nothing they can do about that. I have a hard time with that, that they can't do anything. I mean, if you were at my place and you came to my house and you sat there and you were reading your paper, "Meow, meow," any time of the day, they try to quit at 1:30. Don't always do it. It's totally unacceptable. What's also unacceptable, though, is the way the town is treating us. We're like from a Third World country or something. We call up, we ask, well, what about this? We told you, we can't help you. There's nothing we can do for you. So I guess we're at the whatever of the church. And I think that's totally wrong. I think, I would like to get together with Pastor Matt, as he's called, he's the pastor of the Great Rock Church, and try to come up with something that is not so ambiguous. Come up with some times when they can do things, when they can't do things, because, you know, they don't really care about us. You know, you try to get some information, you can't get anything. So I'd like to get on the agenda so we can present the full, you know, of what's going on to you in the proper manner. But from what I understand, I wasn't even sure how this was going to go tonight, and I wasn't sure how we're supposed to get on the agenda, but Ms. Langley's there, helped me out and told me how it was, and I appreciate that. And it just seems like they don't care about us. I mean, we pay taxes, they don't, but that's okay. And I don't know what, it seems like this church has some, something over this town. I don't know what. And maybe they don't. But I just think to let them run around with impunity, take their site from up where it was, bring it down to this church, and do what they're doing, I mean, it's like a lumber company out there. I know, I know you can't ask questions. I got, I don't have a lot more than that. If you want to come down and look at 352 Andover Street, look in the back, drive by it, just look in there, and you'll see. Also, the logs, the logs go from that window to this one here. And they seem to be encroaching more and more into the wetland when they get, in other words, they're trying to, I don't know what the lot size is, I don't know how far back they go to the lot line in the back. Everything's unknown, and no one can really give us, help us out with what's going on.
Thank you. Sure, select man, you told you that you could come, state your case, but we don't make any decisions tonight.
She did.
Very good. So we'll ask the town manager to kind of get a handle on the comments you've made.
Yeah.
I know the building inspector has made a few comments, and perhaps we can get that information to you.
Well, I will say one thing. We've called the building inspector, and he says, can't help you. Really, can't, why? Can't help.
Well, that's the question we'll have. The town manager asks the building inspector why.
I appreciate that.
Okay, so at least we'll have the why. And it's very easy to find out what property they own and how far the property line goes, and if it encroaches on the lands. Those are not facts that cannot be determined.
Well, I understand that they did have someone come up by, from the environmental, whatever they call this here. And they said they're not in violation. But it appears that as time goes by, those logs are getting deeper and deeper and pushing back, and, you know, I don't know. I don't know how to address that. But that's why I want to full, you know, really bring it out, find out what's going on, and why we can't get any cooperation from the town. I mean, I don't think you would like to live where I live right now. It's terrible. We got people that work nights, you know?
You already stated that, sir. You're starting to repeat yourself.
Well, yeah, okay. I'm not the greatest public speaker in the world.
That's okay. That's fine. You did well. You presented your case.
You know, I'm just trying to present this on the behalf of the other residents that this affects. And I won't repeat another thing. I'll let you come to your decision.
So we'll ask the town manager kind of gather some facts and get back to us in the future. Our next meeting is not till August.
Okay. And will you notify, how will you notify us if the, you know what, I hate to call it like I'm looking for a committee between the church, the town, and ourselves.
Well--
Because you know both committees.
My recommendation is for you to speak to the church and see if you can resolve it yourself. If not, let us know that.
Yeah, well--
We're not the business--
I understand that. But he says we'll try, if we can, we'll try to do this, we'll try to do that. There's nothing permanent. And I don't know if it's an annual, if they go year round. We can't find that out.
Yeah, I don't know.
You know, it would be good to, for some of them to know, well, maybe we can put up with it for maybe three months, you know, maybe. So that's where we're at.
All right, thank you for bringing it to our attention, and we'll see if the town manager can gather some information for us.
Thank you for listening. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Yes, ma'am?
Hello, my name is Laurie Capone, and I'm representing my parents, Beverly and Robert O'Giba, who live on Dire Court, Fort Dire Court. And they were in the process, or they are in the process, of selling their home, and unfortunately, their septic tank has failed. And they do not have town sewerage, and they, I'm working with the town engineer, Stephen King--
Stephen King, yes.
And have drafted up a proposal. And I, from my understanding, the way this works is that we're asking the town to consider putting this on the next town agenda meeting that has to be approved by the water and sewer commissioners and the town in order to get this on the budget for next, I guess, next year. The meeting just happens, I guess, once a year in May, and unfortunately, because the septic system had failed after May, we are now looking to connect to the town sewer system. And the neighbor, Mr. Arthur Valsor as well, he's the other house that's on the street that also has a septic system. And we're the only two houses on the street that would need the town to bring down their sewer line from Holton Street down to Dire Court. And the other apartment buildings that are, I guess they are already on town sewer, but it's private, and you would have to go through a special easement in order to go that way. So we're just, I guess, requesting a special meeting or hearing if you were going to have another meeting this year in order for this to happen as soon as, as soon as possible in order for us to move forward with selling their home. They're at the point in their lives where they are just on pension and social security, and it's getting too much of an old house to be living in, and a safety concern, and they want to move on with their lives and sell the house, but because of the current situation, they are having difficulty. So anything that the town could do to make this happen as quickly as possible so that we can move forward, it would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you. Yes, and I know you've been in touch with Mr. King, and he has sent out some estimates to you. The Water and Sewer Commission, they meet more often once a year. So I'll again ask the town manager to kind of get the information, gather the facts, and see how they can expedite it if possible. But we are limited by state and federal laws on these projects that we need to adhere to. Was that explained to you?
Not, not really, no. So I don't know if that's a side conversation I have with Stephen King to understand what that means, so--
That would be a good idea--
Okay.
--to do that. But meanwhile, we'll ask the town manager to kind of gather the information and get back to us with some type of response.
Mr. Chairman, the Water Sewer Commission is meeting tonight, and this is, this subject is on their agenda tonight for discussion.
So it probably would have been best served to be there tonight than here.
I actually asked him that question, and he said that, he said that it wasn't necessary, and that he had the information for the meeting, and that my best option was to come here and speak on--
I can't do, we can't do anything for you tonight.
I understand you can't make a decision. But whatever it is that can be put on the next meeting to get this approved--
We'll hear from their meeting tonight--
That would be great.
--what their, what the outcome was.
Okay, thank you very much.
And it is likely that there will be a special town meeting this fall prior to next May, so there will be an opportunity before next May.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else with new business, not on the agenda? No? Okay, very good, thank you. Thank you for coming before us tonight with those concerns. So I get the pleasure tonight of reading a letter to congratulate a resident celebrating his 100th birthday this month. And he's also a veteran. Mr. Carl R. Hanson. Dear Mr. Hanson, we've been told by a close relative that you are about to celebrate your 100th birthday at the end of this month. A momentous occasion such as this should not go unrecognized by the town of Danvers, which has been home to you for 75 years, 75 of those years. It is very gratifying to know that you and your family chose to remain in Danvers for so many years. We also learned that you were in the armed services, a veteran of World War II, and to our congratulations, on this occasion, on your birthday, we add our thanks for your service to our country. There's a party planned, we heard, at which friends, neighbors, and relatives will offer their best wishes to you as well. Although we can't be there in person, each of us wanted you to know that our wishes for you are health, happiness, and the company of many friends and family on this special occasion. Sincerely, Daniel C. Bennett, Chairman. So it is great honor to sign this, and we'll mail that out to him. Number four, the board will vote to accept the gift of a public pavilion for Endicott Park by Rotary of Danvers in conjunction of Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53A. Is there something to speak to that? David.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is David Mountain. I'm the Recreation Director for the Town of Danvers. I also have with me tonight some members from the Danvers Rotary Club and our Natural Resource Director, Christopher Samborn. Come before you tonight with some great news, in our opinion. We've been working with the Danvers Rotary Club, and we would like to have the board accept a picnic pavilion. It will be a 24 by 44 picnic pavilion that would be purchased and installed at Endicott Park, adjacent to the orchard area and the fire pit area. The area would be used by park visitors and could also be used as a permitted area by many of the groups that already attend the park. This would provide shelter, shade, and an appropriate area, we feel, for people to use the park and continue to use it in the manner in which we would like. So come, I also like to have Becky Kilborn come up and speak a little bit about the partnership that we've come before you tonight.
Welcome, Becky. Would you please introduce the other folks with you from Rotary?
I will.
Thank you.
We have, I'm Becky Kilborn from Danvers Rotary, and we have Jackie Shambaugh, who's our president of Rotary this year, and Tom Stamdering from Danvers Rotary.
Welcome.
Thank you. So we're thrilled to be involved in this project. Tom spends some of his time in the winter in Florida, and he saw a pavilion similar to this at The Villages in Florida, came back with the idea, thought it would be a good idea for Rotary. We approached the rec department, and we've been working with Chris Samborn and Dave Mountain. They also had been thinking of this idea. Apparently, there are four picnic sites at Endicott Park, and none of them are covered, so if it rains, people have to cancel, or if it's too hot, they have no place for shade. Last year, Rotary planted 40 apple trees, an apple orchard at Endicott Park, and this pavilion will be near that location. So we've identified a kit. We've met with the Historic Commission already, and they've approved it. And the kit has been ordered, and we plan to do the construction next fall. They didn't want us to do it in the summer because of all the activities at the park. So the processes, we ordered the kit from New England Recreation Group, which the town works with, they're a preferred vendor. And we will hire a contractor and work with the rec department and get a pad built, and then build the pavilion. So it's really fun to watch all the improvements at Endicott Park, and Rotary's thrilled to be involved in it. So, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Questions, Bill?
No questions. Becky, thank you very much. I think it's going to be a great addition--
Yeah.
--to Endicott Park. And I'm sorry, I took too much time the night you were before the Historic Commission before you got a chance to talk.
Bill was on first.
Excuse me. One second.
Is that Goddard?
So it looks like it's going to be roughly in the same area that the pickout was last weekend.
It's just past there.
Just past there. And I think David mentioned it would be for, you know, for public use, but then also, I guess I'm presuming, if there's permitted exclusive use, so if a wedding wanted to be there, they would have exclusive use of the building and so on and so forth.
It would really be up to the rec department.
Right.
Yeah. We think 12 tables will fit comfortably under there, so it'll be a good size.
Great. Okay. I have no other questions, and thank you for the kind donation.
David?
Thank you to Rotary, and also continued thanks to the Rotary for the gift of the Bandstand Pavilion down at the Mill Pond, which I think was now 25 to 30 years ago.
Yes.
And it certainly has meant a lot to a lot of people, so the Rotary is a great-- And finally, like, when I was working my way through college, the Rotary had lunch at the Village Green Restaurant every Monday, and there were 300 Rotarians. I don't know how you're doing now, but it was a very, very robust and wonderful bunch.
That's awesome. That's awesome. Thank you.
Diane?
Thank you, Becky. This is really wonderful, and thank you for continuing to support Endicott Park. Don't forget the barn.
Yeah, yeah. We did donate money for the nature center, and we did donate a bench that's near the playground area.
And then the new barn. So we don't want you to forget Endicott Park. We got more going on there.
Yeah, yeah. The Rotary Pavilion at Mill Pond is for our 75th anniversary, and we were looking for a project for our 100th anniversary, and this is a little premature. We thought it was the time to go ahead and do it.
It's nice, thank you.
So you mentioned the area where this is going to go. I was impressed by the number of apple trees, as you mentioned, that are planted there.
Yeah.
That's quite a--
Forty.
Forty, yeah.
Yeah, the Rotary International had asked everyone to plant one tree for each member, so at that point, we had four members, and we planted 40 trees. And they've done really well. We lost two this year, and the rec department replanted them.
Oh, nice.
Yeah.
So I'm not an arborist, but as they get as big as those old ones there, is there enough room for them to survive?
Uh-uh.
Yes.
Do you want to, Chris, do you want to answer that question?
I know it's a serious space, though, but there's some old trees, and I don't know how old those are, but they're still standing from whenever.
Yeah.
But it really is impressive, the number of trees.
It seemed like when they were--
Yes, when you planted them.
--planted, they were very tiny--
Yes.
--and seemed like they were really far apart, but now that they've grown a lot in a year.
They have. They look very good. So thank you for that, and thank you for this gift as well. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
What's the will of the board?
We were thrilled to do it.
I move that we accept the application as presented.
Second motion.
Any conversation, discussion? We'll ascend the appropriate letter out as well, the body of your motion.
Sure.
Thank you.
And you saw the board and everything, right?
Yes, we did. Thank you, yes.
Yeah, we've got a couple other things going on, too, so, thank you very much.
You're welcome. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none? Thank you. Thank you all for coming. The board will consider the application of Ink Cups, 310 Andover Street, Natalie Dennis, event coordinator, for a one-day wine and malt beverage license on Wednesday, July 24, 2019, 3:00 to 8:00, for a company outing at Endicott Park, 57 Forest Street. Is someone here to speak to that? Good evening.
Hello.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Thank you. My name is William Sousa. This is Natalia Dennis standing beside me. We both work for Ink Cups at 310 Andover Street in Danvers. And we are hosting an international sales summit coming up in July, where we're having our salespeople from all over the world come and join us for a week. What we'd like to do is, we'd like to show them a little greener side of Danvers and host an event at Endicott Park on the evening of Wednesday, the 24th. And we are here hoping that we can get a beer and wine permit for the event at Endicott Park.
Is everything in order, Clark?
Yes, the paperwork's in order.
Paperwork's in order, okay. Just, what is Ink Cups?
We're a company that builds printing equipment and supplies. You've noticed, like, a lot of Hanes underwear now doesn't have a label, it has a pad print. That's our technology.
Interesting.
Yeah, and we now are into the promotional market and cylinders and all kinds of stuff. The company has grown tremendously. We started off as a company in a basement in 2001, and now we're rounding out about $48 million this year.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
And you're located here in Danvers?
We're located here in Danvers, proudly.
And you're going to bring people here from around the world for this?
Absolutely. We have people coming from Japan, Hong Kong, Vietnam, South America, North America, obviously, Canada, Mexico, Germany, other places as well.
That's great. Thank you very much. Diane, any questions?
I remember when you were in the basement, I was on the second floor.
Oh, you--
But you have built an amazing company, and I am just--
Thank you.
--thrilled. When I knew you were moving off of Locust Street, I was in panicsville that you were going to leave Danvers, because you were obviously so successful, and I see your boss over there. But I, I'm really just glad you stayed here. I think it's great that you're going to take Endicott Park and showcase it to the world. And I really hope you have a great day, great weather. Too bad our pavilion wouldn't be up for you by then.
I know, that would be perfect.
But bring them all back next year, and they won't have to worry about the weather.
Sounds great.
But really happy that you stayed in Danvers.
Thank you, we love it here.
You employ a lot of people. In fact, I think, hundreds. How many do you employ here in Danvers?
I think--
At 114 Plant?
At the 114, we're about 80 people now.
So, and it's grown. But thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Diane. David?
I adopt Diane's very articulate comments, and thank you for what you do for Danvers.
Thank you.
Goddard?
A couple of technical questions I ask all applicants with beer and wine licenses. Who's actually going to do the serving, and are they tip certified?
They are. We hired Premier Bar, David Marks, and they're, I did present the liability insurance, and they do have tip-certified bartender that will come and serve the beer and the wine.
Okay. Endicott Park's Lodge, are you in a specific area of the park?
We are.
Yes, we're in Zone 1, Park 1.
Okay. And so the alcohol service and consumption will be controlled to that area?
Correct.
Those are my questions. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Bill?
I have no questions, and good luck. Thank you very much for all you're doing for the town--
Thank you.
--and providing the jobs to local people. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
What's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the application as presented.
Second.
Conversation, discussion, none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none? Thank you very much for coming, and good luck.
Thank you. Thank you.
The board will consider the application of Notch Brewing, 35 Woodbury Ave., Portsmouth, New Hampshire, John Thompson, manager for one-day wine and malt beverage license on New Hampshire, John Thompson, manager for one-day wine and malt beverage license on Saturday, July 6, 2019, 5:30 to 7:30, for a wedding rehearsal dinner at Endicott Park, 57 Forest Street. Please introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm John Thompson from Notch Brewing Company.
Thank you. Welcome again.
Thanks. It's good to be back.
Give us a little update on what is he gonna do.
So, it's pretty simple. One of our taproom regulars is getting married. I run our mobile beer garden program, and he asked if we could do sort of a small, private pop-up beer garden for their rehearsal dinner. Casual, easygoing, you know, it's a holiday weekend, and they've got a lot of guests from out of town. So it's just two hours in Endicott Park. I've been in touch with Catherine. She's been a tremendous help in getting these plans worked out. The, I guess, my client, they have already made the reservations with Danvers Park to reserve that portion of the park, and I'm just doing the liquor licensing part of things.
Kathy, is everything in order?
Yes.
It is wonderful. David, question?
Thank you, Bill.
No, Phil?
No questions.
Gardiner?
Based on your past appearance, I know that you're tip-certified, so I'm satisfied with that.
Thanks, Dave.
And I presume that you're gonna, you've got a designated location that you're gonna be controlling the sale and consumption in?
Yes, we were told we have a fifty-by-fifty area to set up, so we'll maintain all of that.
Those are my questions. Thank you.
Diane?
I think he's getting control of this rehearsal by keeping it two hours, so probably not a bad idea. Some of those get out of hand, but good luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. What's the will of the board?
I move we accept the application as presented.
Second.
Okay. Any comments, questions? No appearing? And all in favor?
Aye.
No, opposed? None? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. The board has received of an application from Yan 50 Maple Street Realty Trust to call and Joyce Pashudo for temporary staging to occupy a two-foot-wide section of sidewalk running along the sixty-five-foot building facade for a period of eight months during construction renovation of their property located at 44 Maple Street. Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening. Thank you very much. My name is Nancy McCann, and I'm here on behalf of Nick and Joyce Pashudo. Nick is here this evening as well. Also with me tonight is the contractor for the job, Benjamin Pyburn, and we are in the process of beginning preparation for the project located at 44 Maple Street, which is a renovation and a restoration of that building that received the approval from the Board of Appeals and the Planning Board some time ago. And part of the site plan approval and the certificate of action from the Planning Board included a condition that we meet with the Board of Selectmen to obtain the necessary approval and permit to occupy a portion of the sidewalk along the facade of the existing building during construction to provide staging and screening of that area. And I spoke with Mr. Collins, and he suggested that I submit the letter, which I did, to you. I also submitted with the letter a general site plan of the property just for context, as well as a detail of the facade of the building. We are proposing to put staging along a facade length of the building, which is sixty-five feet. The staging will encroach into the sidewalk two feet, so we are looking for only a two-foot encroachment. The building itself sets back from the property line, so the overall width of the staging will be a little over five feet. And again, we're looking for a two-foot width for the length of sixty-five feet for the staging. And let's see. The staging would be up during the course of the construction, which we anticipate to be eight months, beginning in September of this year. The staging is in three sections of eight feet each, and you'll note on the detail sheet that with the staging in place, there will still be a ten-foot-wide sidewalk maintained and unencroached along that span. We did receive some questions through the town clerk's office, and the assistant town clerk provided those to me. Hours of construction is, again, regulated and listed in the Planning Board decision, Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Saturday, 8:00 to 5:00, and no construction hours on Sundays or holidays. We did receive some questions from the Town Engineering Department, and we provided those written responses, which I can go over with you, but we did provide those, as well as the emergency contact name, which is for Mr. Pyburn and his construction company, and that was provided. The parking of construction vehicles will be at the rear of the building. There are parking spaces behind the existing building, and that's what will be utilized for the parking of construction vehicles, and the construction will actually be done through the rear of the building. We anticipate during the course of construction that there will only be five to ten workers on site on any given day in any event. So that's what we have to present to you tonight. We're requesting the approval to maintaining, to maintain the staging, which includes screening, to protect pedestrians along the sidewalk for a width of two feet along the sixty-five-foot frontage of 44 Maple Street. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I'll just, information, have you checked in with the police department and fire department?
That will be done all during the course of getting the building permit in place.
So you don't have a building permit?
No, no, not yet.
Interesting. Mr. Manager, is that appropriate?
The building inspector would not issue a building permit until we had your approval in place.
Can you comment on that?
On what part of that?
Well, they don't have a permit, and the building inspector won't issue it without our approval. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Gardiner, any questions?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. So I got a bunch of questions in there, no particular order or no priority, but I did look at your plans. I did, so as you look at the building, each of the businesses in the building have overhang, a canopy in the front, and the drawing that you provided was two feet past that canopy. So is, does that mean the canopy is on the owner's property? Does the property line start past that canopy?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So it's hard to tell, and you know, obviously, the detailed schematic is almost impossible to read with my eyes, but, you know, but, so I'm looking at this one and seeing that it's two feet past that. You provided some in the safeguards during construction. In the back, there were some samples of what other people do. I'm presuming that's not what you're doing, because that actually goes over the entire sidewalk. You're not doing that. You're not covering the entire sidewalk, are you?
No.
No, okay.
No, it's not to walk. You won't be able to walk.
Okay, so it's not a walkway like that that's lighted, and people go underneath the whole thing. It's just two, so you said total of five feet from the face of the building, three feet plus two feet, which goes into the town property. Okay.
Correct.
Couple of, so, will the businesses that are in the building now continue to operate? What do you anticipate the impact to be to those businesses? You'll no longer see their signage. You'll have to go through the scaffolding to get into those businesses. What do you anticipate to be the impact to the businesses?
I discussed that with the building inspector as far as potentially phasing the construction and what he would require to allow tenants to continue to occupy the building during construction. As a practical matter, that may be difficult during much of the construction. So most likely, the tenants are not going to be there, or one or two will be there while it's under construction if we phase it. But what the building inspector did tell me is, if we wish to have tenants remain in the building and we phase the construction, that access to each tenant's space will have to be maintained in a safe and code-compliant manner.
Okay, 'cause it looks like on the ground level, you have the hairdressers, you have the coin shop, you have, each coin and jewelry shop, you have Good Lickens, which just recently opened, and then you have a second floor with some number of businesses, including the Tanner City. So four, or five, six businesses are going to be impacted by this. Good Licking just opening, this may be a particular impact to them. You did talk about the construction vehicles being in the back of the building. Is that based on the fact that the renters won't be there? Because the zoning would call for the, for the, the building itself, as it sits today, must have a certain number of parking spots. I don't believe there's ten extra spots back there. So is this gonna push the people who have businesses off-site for their parking?
No. The second floor that you were talking about is not going to be occupied during the course of construction, because that is coming down as part of the construction.
Okay.
The first floor in this zoning district, parking is not necessarily required on-site. We will have additional spaces in the back over what we will need for purposes of construction vehicles, so this should not displace any existing tenants, should the tenants be remaining during the course of construction.
Okay. Thank you. And that's just, they're just gonna use it for parking, not, not keeping construction materials and stuff like that in the back, right? You just need it for the parking?
Well, there may be some construction materials on-site during the course of construction.
Okay, but it won't be in the front, certainly?
Not in front.
Okay.
No.
And I did see that you'll have safety, according to the OSHA and all the other, whatever the bodies are that do it, including the town, you'll have safety signs, but I'm presuming no other signage, other than the safety signs. No, no commercial signage. You're not moving the signing to the front?
No.
Okay. Asking to be, make sure that we're on the same page.
Yeah.
The start and end dates seem kind of fluid, and I am concerned, because this is going to be a big chunk of downtown facade for six to eight months. Right now, it says six, eight months, and I'm concerned about potentially going past that. You're starting in the fall, you're going through the spring of next year, and it's fluid. It says six to eight months, starting September, hopefully, and then it also says the screening's gonna be up only for four months. I don't understand that. And can we get a more definitive start and end date? Because I'm concerned that, and I want you to build in contingency, but I don't want this to, we had a bad winter. We're gonna have to keep it up another three months. So we had a construction delay getting the iron. Town has had the same thing for getting steel. We don't want it to be another three months, and all of a sudden, it's a year or two, a year and a half of this staging being, you know, right in a key, visible part of downtown. So how can we get to a comfortable start and end date that then is adhered to?
Our start date will be September. We have to have a building permit in place before we can start, and that will be occurring no later than the middle of September.
Okay.
So that's our start date.
So it's a September 15th, just rough?
Yep, September 15th.
Okay.
And then the duration of construction, eight months barring something unforeseen.
Okay.
And that's building in some additional, little bit of, a little bit of wiggle.
Sure. Everybody builds in wiggle, and should.
Yeah.
Okay, when it gets to the point, I would like to make sure that at some point, either through the building inspector or come back to the board and say, if you encounter a delay that's going to make this move more than a month, I'd like to know about it beforehand, not in May, not on May 15th, when the clock is ending. I'd like to, you know, set the expectation for the towns and the businesses in the area, 'cause it's not, obviously, it affects those businesses in the building. It affects the others on either side of it. And I want to make sure they have reasonable expectations and understandings as well. Obviously, adequate lighting, but why is the screen only up four out of those eight months?
Well, the thought behind the screen was, we don't necessarily need it past the demolition and framing phase. It was more to protect debris from coming out, and, but we wanted the eight months to allow us the leeway to leave it there for safety's sake, to have the access to the front facade of the building. But the screen doesn't necessarily have to be up during, when we're, you know, painting or doing siding. That's the reason there's a difference between the total time and the time of the screen.
Okay. Just look at my notes. Make sure I got all the questions out that I had. I think I did. Thank you very, um, no, I think I'm good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gardiner. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, scrolling over the, over the winter season, what provisions have been made for snow removal for this area, for the sidewalk?
It'll be shoveled and maintained as it always has been. I think Nick does the snow removal generally in the front of his facade now, and he'll continue to do so.
So there is provisions, that it will be cleared?
Yes.
For pedestrians?
Absolutely.
On your plot plan, I don't see any place for a porta potty for the construction site. Is that something you don't put on the plans or?
Back.
Okay. What about the back? Pretty narrow access back there. Legal status, is that a common alleyway to the back to serve other businesses in the square, other than this people's property?
No.
He can deny any access in that back alley?
There is an easement in place for 50 Maple Street, as well as 44 Maple Street. Fifty is on the corner of Maple and Cherry.
Yep. So the, the, there's no necessary access in the back?
Through, no.
For other businesses?
No, sir.
Okay, what access is for the fire department in the back?
This has gone through site plan approval, and the site plan has been reviewed by the fire department, and they gave favorable recommendations to the planning board. There is certainly a fire lane that is maintained, an access lane, if you will, that is maintained in the back, and it will have to continue to be. As you know, the fire department will review the construction drawings, and will have to stamp those as approved prior to their issuance and delivery to the building inspector's office. The fire department has the first review of the construction drawings, and that will occur.
Okay. As a representative of the people and taxpayers of the town, I'm concerned not only about the people in this building, but those adjacent structures that may have to have access to a fire vehicle through that very, very narrow alleyway that's very difficult to maneuver at regular times, let alone when there's gonna be construction equipment or construction materials staged there. I just want to make sure that there is provisions for snow removal for the people in the front, and you've answered the other questions, I guess, but this staging you're gonna have, is that gonna be insufficient in size to allow the town's plow that does the sidewalks to go through? We have two particular plows that they use in the square area. One of them is a snow blower that's attached to a rather heavy-duty, but relatively small and narrow vehicle. I think it's a little over four feet wide.
The unimpeded sidewalk will be maintained at ten feet in width.
Ten feet?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Diane?
Thank you, Attorney McCann. I have to ask, is this Ben Pyburn from Cabot Road?
Are you, are you Gary's mom?
I am.
I thought you were. I haven't seen you in so long.
Well, I'm not worried about the netting, 'cause you were a really good catcher.
Yeah.
So I'm all right with that. I'm glad to see you're gonna be running the party. You look just like your father. So, the sidewalk. So my job here is the staging. So when I looked at these pictures, I was kind of happy, because it did look wider than what you had said. And when you're in New York, people walk under, they're back and forth, and a lot of times, what they do is they split the sidewalk, so people going this way walk that way, people walking this way. And so five feet, I don't even, what's ADA regulation for width for, do we know? Four?
Thirty-six is a three.
So this would be okay for any wheelchair, strollers?
They're going around the front. They won't be going through the...
Yeah, and that's, that's almost what I don't like. So that's what I'm saying. I'm not sure, I wouldn't, I actually like it covering the whole sidewalk. I think it makes more sense personally, but I, in New York, they, you do, you go two different ways, and it kind, it works nice, because you don't have people walking around, but I'm sure downtown Danvers isn't as busy as Manhattan.
Right, but this staging is up, and then you have ten feet of sidewalk, so there really isn't any need to...
And you have trees and stuff. I have no problem with this. I guess what I'd like to do is look at this more for, as we go forward with the downtown. So you're actually my guinea pigs on what we're looking at here, and a couple of things you've said. I think eight months is a long time, but I'm assuming you just don't want to come back and see us.
Correct.
Right, I know, Ben. And the town manager, you know, one of the things I don't like is that they're not working on Sundays, because Sunday's a slower day, so as we look at the downtown, I don't know what the bylaws and all are, but I actually would rather expedite in these projects, because at some point, we're gonna have a lot going on downtown, and hopefully, and so seven days of work in the summer, I think is a good idea. And it's less busy on a Sunday afternoon, there's more parking, there's, you know, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday is tough. There's a lot of people walking to and from work or whatever. So I actually would like us to look at that, and again, sorry, Attorney McCann, but I'm gonna use this project for, as we vote on the downtown. So staging, as long as it meets ADA, I'm fine. I think eight months is a long time. I'm hoping that you'll show us for further permanent, as we go down, work the downtown, and the people of Danvers, that it's really not gonna take eight months every time something goes on downtown, because we're really looking to make it more vibrant. It only helps every landowner, building owner down there. But thank you for coming in front of us. Good luck, Ben.
Thanks.
David?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do not approve of this application at all. That intersection of Cherry Street with Maple, is that school across the, is it School Street on the other side?
Oh, the opposite side, yes.
It's school, comes to Maple, comes to Cherry. It's a traffic nightmare all the time. The suggestion that there are gonna be ten workers here means ten vehicles. The space behind that building is totally inadequate to begin to contain and accommodate the amount of traffic, construction, work, and materials that are gonna be used there. So that leads me to not have confidence in the proposal for the protection of people on the sidewalk and accommodation of the existing buildings. So I think that it is essentially going to be a nightmare for traffic and for pedestrians and for anybody who has been using that back parking area. I look at it when I go by, because I'm very often swinging at the Cherry Street. It doesn't fit, and it doesn't fit safely. And what has been proposed tonight, I've looked at it, I've studied it. It doesn't feel safe to me, and I would not support it, and I will not vote for it.
Thank you. So you're kind of constrained with your parking, because there's no parking allowed on Cherry Street on that side where it's posted. You can't park on the sidewalks in the front, so you are restricted to the rear for parking for these trucks. Is that correct?
That's where the construction vehicles will park.
And where will the dumpsters be?
They'll be in the back as well. Sure.
How many dumpsters do you envision?
It's tough to say.
Do you, will you shoots to throw the debris down, or just toss it out the window?
Everything's going out the back. So all debris's going out the back.
Out the window. No shoots?
No, no. There's shoots as required, right. You know, for upper levels, we'll use shoots, but then as it goes down, we won't use shoots anymore. But everything goes out the back.
Are you aware of the town bylaw prohibiting trash pickup before 7:00 a.m.?
Yes.
Do I know?
Yes.
Thank you. What other type of construction equipment do you envision being down there? Cranes?
At points.
At points. Okay. So I think we are... At points. Okay. So I think we all agree it's going to be tight back there, to get every, your construction workers. Hopefully the construction workers will back down the street and walk up.
That's the plan, is to have them park off-site.
Yeah, drop the tools off and walk. I think that'll make it easier for you.
Right.
Especially if you've got dumpsters in there, what have you. On the staging, will the construction manager contact information be displayed?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
What, what's the amount of the bond, insurance bond you're going to use for the use of town property?
When I spoke to Mr. Collins, he said typically it was $5,000.
And yet this board can choose a higher amount?
I believe you can.
We can't, so keep that in mind, folks. $5,000's not a very large amount of insurance bond for a construction project like this.
What was the insurance that she's saying?
It's, $5,000 is general, but it's, we're allowed to set it and raise it.
$5,000?
Yeah, five with three zeros.
The bond.
Bond, yep. You, you understand it better than we do, David.
The potential liability?
Right.
Something like that could be incoming, a million would not be out of the, out of the question.
Thank you. And that's why I bring it up, so we can discuss that. Thank you. You respond to the days and hours of operation, there's no Sunday, and we're not going to set a precedent given you Sundays, when nobody else can work on Sundays. And Diane, do it in your neighborhood before you suggest it in my neighborhood, please.
I live on Cabot Road. I live on Cabot Road.
We have not requested Sunday. We have not requested Sunday.
Thank you. Well, I just saw you making notes, I wanted to be sure that wasn't going to come back to us.
I did make a note.
Yes, I know you did.
But I did not request it.
And I asked for the town manager when we talk about downtown.
So you know where I stand.
That's good.
Is lighting necessary at nighttime for that staging?
No.
Because?
Well, we won't be working at night.
Okay, so the, but the staging, the street lights will be adequate for?
Correct.
Pedestrians to know that there's a staging there. Of course, I can't guarantee the eighth graders won't run into it, but coming out of the coffee shop. This is something new for us. We haven't had this type of construction downtown in, I don't know how many years, probably since the fire at?
Fossil block.
The fossil block, right, right. So it's been a while. So bear with us as we try to get our hands around it. I would have been much happier that police and fire had signed off on this before it came to us, but that's not going to happen. But I trust that they'll work with you folks, and you with them as well.
Certainly.
Any other questions from?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, based on some comments and questions here?
Please.
Two things. Just confirming, the staging you're talking about is not to allow walk-through underneath, it's not a pass-through, it is separate and only for construction. Tight to the building, there's no anticipation of people walking through it, other than the openings that get to the doors to the, to the businesses.
That is exactly right, and it's, it's simply two feet wide.
Yep.
And it is to separate the construction area from the sidewalk.
How will you protect from kids climbing it? Is, when I heard screening, my, I envisioned, and that there would be, you know, some sort of screening around it at the ground level to, so that they couldn't grab onto the scaffolding and start scaling it. How are you going to protect from kids doing that?
So the, the screening does, is, you can't climb on the screening, and it goes from the base all the way up to the railing height at the top of the, of the structure. And it also has metal cross braces within the screening, so you can't push through into the screening. It's, it's designed to keep people and out and debris.
Which is exactly what I assumed, however, now I'm concerned that you're saying only doing it for four out of the eight months. That means for four other months, it's going to be open, accessible, and climbable.
Yeah, we gladly keep the screening up, you know.
Okay. Great. Thank, those are my follow-up questions, thank you.
Any other follow-up questions, comments, anybody? So, hearing some of the questions, we're going to require snow removal during the winter months. We're going to require a construction manager contact information be displayed promptly. All traffic and parking regulations be adhered to. All bylaws are adhered to. Anything else that we want to add?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, one question for you through the town manager. We talked about a performance bond, but we've also know that there's insurance, indemnification and insurance. What is the technical difference between the two, as far, you know, that we're asking for? If you could just enlighten us about the difference between insurance bonding, insurance and indemnification of the town, and performance bonding? So if I get a little more detail on that.
Sure. Well, with your permission, Mr. Chairman, we happen to have Town Attorney David DeLuca with us tonight, and I would much rather punt this question to him.
At the microphone, if you would, David, sorry.
For him.
Put you on the spot.
This microphone?
No, right up here.
We have, we're.
So everybody at home can see you.
Yes, McKenna's.
Please introduce yourself, David.
Yes, good evening. My name is Attorney David DeLuca, Town Council of the Town of Danvers. Happy to be here, and to try to give a little bit of information or some definition to what you're talking about here. Performance bond is something we're all familiar with in the construction industry. The town requires performance bonding on, on any of the town projects. You will typically see that as a, an insurance for infrastructure on a subdivision, for example. We'll want to make sure the roads are done right, that the stormwater management is done correctly. That's the, the need, or calls for a performance bonding. If it's not, we go to an insurance carrier, the bond carrier, and we make sure that, that we are able to recover and, and get a substitute contractor to do something that wasn't done. Liability insurance has a, is a, for, serves a different function. That protects the town from any third-party liability, should there be an accident, should there be some kind of mishap, and should the town find itself the object of, of a lawsuit. We'll want to make sure we have protection from any third-party lawsuits. In an instance like this, I could see very logically the town requesting and requiring both the, the performance bond and a liability bond that can be accomplished probably by way of a binder, or insurance binder, so that the town is named as an additional insured on the liability insurance carrier for this applicant. So both the performance bonding and liability or liability policy would be appropriate here.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Before, may I ask?
Yes, please.
David, I don't know if this is something that you, have you any sense of what dollar amount of liability coverage would be appropriate, or would you have to look at the plans and the?
Well, typically, typically, the, the town might require a liability policy on, on any kind of project that is affecting the town's interest. Typically, it's, it's a million dollars per person, $3 million per accident. Those are the policy limits that are generally acceptable for the town, if there is going to be work being done in a public way, so that the town's interest is protected. Those are the usual policy limits.
Because I know my car insurance is a million dollars for just one person and one car.
Sure.
So it seems to me that we probably, I'm not going to vote for this, but if the board is going to approve it, I think that there should be a very substantial liability benefit for the town in the event of an accident or something happening down there, including a collision of cars with construction vehicles in that space. I don't think it can happen, it simply can't happen in that space, but it's going to be a nightmare.
Thank you, David. Any other questions, concerns? Steve?
I would just offer to the board, I think this, the, the project that was approved by the ZBA is consistent with what I think the town meeting was very supportive of last year, and I think it's, Selectman Trask indicated this is, or Diane as well, this is sort of our first project of this sort. This particular application was submitted a week ago, and I know even as of yesterday, there were some responses to questions being provided to staff. We've heard some questions tonight, I, I wouldn't want to put David on the spot tonight to offer ideas about what sort of bonding may be appropriate for a project like this. And, and I, I certainly wouldn't be able to advise the board to approve it as presented tonight. I would, I would suggest that staff have a chance to sit down one more time with, with the team, to, to make sure that we can get a, a level of comfort from each of the departments that would want to weigh in. I understand the, the timing of a lot of these permits are complicated based on the, who has to approve what and when. But I think that, you know, in, in short order, we could probably get a meeting pulled together and, and let staff, at least sort of following in our typical TRC process, offer some guidance to the board in terms of what would be appropriate. You had indicated earlier tonight, we don't have our next regular scheduled meeting until August, but certainly we could pull a meeting together sooner than that, if, if that would be appropriate and would be acceptable to the board.
Gardner?
Mr. Chairman, I was going, I, I'm fine, I was prepared to make a motion with certain conditions, and I'm going to mention the conditions to the extent that if these can be worked out, are baked in, or thought out when we go through, these are what I was going to make a motion with, and I'm certainly, they don't represent the board's will, because it's just my recommendations, but obviously, a, an insurance binder that includes not only a liability insurance, but a performance bond that is in keeping with the other performance bonds for major construction in the area. I remember that we've had to call, in the past, call upon performance bonds to incentivize developers to complete work. I'm thinking of, up, near the port and the hill, so, oh, over there.
Kirk, Brian.
Kirk, yep. I was also going to suggest that, as you said, display the contractor information, so it's easily accessible and readable. Adequate snow removal. I would like screening to the ground level full-time, while the scaffolding up. I, I understand you may not do it from the second floor up, but I want that protected from climbing the entire time. It would be my request. That this have hard start and end dates. I, you know, based on your comments, I was going to say September 15th to May 15th, and that if any extension of that has to come before the Board of Selectmen for approval, at least two months prior to the extension. If you run into problems with getting your steel, if you run into whatever weather, whatever it is, understandable, and we're certainly amenable to those things, but I don't want surprises. This isn't just about that building, and it's not even about those businesses per se, it's about the residents, use of the, of downtown, and all the businesses around you. So I want them all to have reasonable expectations. No construction parking on the public streets. You've already intimated that, but I'd like that expressly stated. No deliveries or trash pickup before 7:00 AM or on Sundays. The neighbors don't need to hear the be, backing up beeping sound of a lumber delivery at 6:45 on a Monday morning. No deliveries, sure, sure. I think, I think that was, those are the, the, the conditions I was going to ask for if there were to be a motion, but if, I'm not going to suggest we make, I'm going to follow the suggestion of the town manager, not make a motion of approval tonight, but ask that those things be considered when they come back, because I'll be looking at, for some of those answers when it comes back to us again.
Thank you. Bill, any comments?
I just would like to see specific answers to some of the questions we've raised tonight come from, for example, the fire department. I have very concerned, very deep concerns about access to the back of the building, for fire access for not only this building, but for the surrounding residential buildings or commercial buildings on Page Street. And I'd rather have them make the decision before it's brought back to us for final approval.
Diane?
Well, one of the things Gardner said is already a bylaw, so they can't come before 7:00 anyway, so I'm assuming you're going to follow all bylaws. I, I don't know if we're going a little beyond the scope. I'm more than willing to listen to our legal counsel and our building inspector. I'm not sure that liability and bond isn't set based on the amount of the project, so I'll wait to hear from them what the appropriate amount is. I just, I feel we're going a little beyond the scope. I understand you have concerns. I also would hope that as a board, we would understand they're trying to get this going in September, and that they should have an answer in what I think should be a reasonable time, and I'm more than willing to come back in July for this. I think we should show more respect. So I would like to know what that date is, I think, and what time, and usually we try to come in at 10, because some of us don't like to go out too late at night. But I, I think we're going a little beyond the scope. I do think there's some questions here. Thank you, General Counsel, for, for being here, because I think that I would rather hear from him and from our building inspector on these things. But I, I think we should be in a reasonable time. Also, with the eight month, I think the eight month should start based on what they tell the building inspector their start date is. I do not want to give them a date. Building, the building inspector gives the permit, that should be who decides when the clock starts, or maybe the date that the building, the building permit is given. But, but I don't want to put in our motion something and then have it delayed. So, although I still want you to get it done within six months, because that would be a great precedent to set. So, you know, I just think we're going a little beyond, but I'd just like to stay within our regulations, and anything that is set, it should be set by our professionals. Thank you.
Thank you. So Attorney McHann, I think you understand that we want to get some further information from staff, get some guidelines confirmed and stone, and you can come back to us at a future date. I'm willing to set a date in July if that's helpful to you, or you can wait till August.
Well, we certainly don't want to wait till August, because we can't get our building permit?
No, that's fine.
Until we have this squared away.
So, we're willing, I'm willing to work with the town manager to set a date in July when we can have all the information.
And I appreciate that very much, but I am not clear on what additional information you are looking for. The fire department and the police department have already approved this project. This went through site plan approval. Parking in the rear of the building, fire access in the rear of the building is not what's before you. I thoroughly understand where construction vehicles are going to park, and we have told you, and that, that is your, a concern that you have, and to make sure that construction vehicles are not parked on the public streets, and we have addressed that and said that we would not do that. But I don't know what additional information you are looking for. We have provided the details of what.
The town manager and staff will get back to you with questions that we need, want answered through them.
And Mr. Chairman, just to be clear, there, there have been questions posed by departments and answered, but as I mentioned, you know, those were coming in as of yesterday, and I think it would be prudent, we can have a meeting called as early as next week to get staff and the design team around the table, and I think would work with you to get a meeting called as early as possible, just to make sure that this, that what you're getting is, is a comfort level from staff, that, that working in the public way is going to be safe and expedient.
Okay.
That's, that's fine, as long as we understand. I just didn't come out of here thinking I had to provide specific information to you, because I don't know what that would be. And we have responded to the engineering department comments, but I appreciate your willingness to do this expeditiously, because we do have a timeframe we're trying to meet. So, where do we stand with, and the other conditions, by the way, that Mr. Trask listed are fine. I mean, we don't have any issues with, with any of those. The liability and performance binder that Attorney DeLuca mentioned, we can certainly work, work with that. So, timing.
Timing. So, the town manager and I are trying to set a time to meet next Tuesday. Is that a reasonable time to have?
I would, I would, if Attorney McHann can reach out to my office tomorrow morning, we can probably get a, a meeting pulled together early next week.
Okay.
Potentially even by the end of this week at the staff level, if, if your team is available. And, and then we can, we can pull probably even sooner than that dates for the board, to see what their availability would be.
Okay, so you weren't talking about the board meeting next Tuesday?
No.
Okay.
I said for the town manager.
All right.
We'll set the agenda, and we'll come up with a date that's convenient for everybody.
Okay.
It'll be probably in the evening, as early as possible.
All right.
Thank you for your diligence.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The board is in receipt of an application from North Shore Brooks Running Series, T.R. Ramsel, Ramsdale, for the annual Summer Sizzle of 5K Road Race on Thursday, July 4th, 2019, 9:00 AM, for road race on the rail trail beginning, ending at Danvers High School parking lot, proceeds to benefit the Danvers Rail Trail and Danvers Park and Recreation. And we have somebody here to speak to that.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm T.R. Ramsdale.
Yes, you look familiar.
Yeah, I do.
Yeah, I do. As you've just read, it's the second annual. It takes place completely on the, on the rail trail. We don't cross any streets. We don't get mixed up in any traffic this time. Starts and finishes on the Danvers High School parking lot.
Thank you. Diane, any questions?
No, T.R., thank you. This is benefiting the rail trail and, and the rec department, and really appreciate you doing this. I, I know how much work goes into volunteering, but you do a great job, and I'm looking forward to seeing the runners go by.
Oh, thank you.
Gardiner?
I have no questions. Thank you for the map, and good luck to you.
Phil?
No questions.
David?
Thank you, T.R., for all that you do for the town and for these causes. It's very important to us.
What's the will of the board?
I move that we accept the application as presented.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none? Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You too. Number nine, a public hearing will be held under chapter one thirty-eight of the general laws on the application of Sam and Joe's Cafe, Inc., DBA Sam and Joe's Restaurant, Anthony Cerullo manager, Thirty Water Street, for a change of manager, change of offices, transfer of stock, and an alteration of premises to add an outside deck with seating at that location.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Tom Inger, Assistant Town Clerk, Ms. Ellsworth. I'm here on behalf of Sam and Joe's Cafe, Inc., along with Anthony Cerullo. This is an application for a number of amendments that were occasioned by, as you know, the Sam and Joe's business has been in town for over half a century. It's gone through generations. It was owned and managed by the Colletries and the Cerullos. Well, the Colletries now, for other reasons perhaps, have, have decided to transfer their interest, and Anthony Cerullo will now be requesting that he be, that he be now the manager. This also occasions a transfer in stock, and also occasions an alteration, we're asking for an alteration of premises and a change of offices. In other words, Ralph Colletry was everything, and now he's gone, so we had to have Anthony come in as manager. There, he did buy out the stock interest, so that he, him and the trust acquired the stock, and he did purchase the building. Financing was done through bank financing, and the amount is six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, five hundred thousand for purchase of Sam and Joe's, a hundred and fifty thousand for purchase of the stock. As for the addition that we're talking about, that would be the outdoor waterfront area. It would consist of seating of twenty-four. Now, we are approved for a hundred and fifty-eight seats. Prior to this, he removed five booths. When you come in on the left, those booths were twenty seats, and he's removing the table where the entrance door will go out to the deck for four seats. So we are gaining twenty-four seats on the deck, but we've given up twenty-four seats, so there is no additional occupancy. It remains at a hundred and fifty-eight. That would, having said that, Anthony's here to answer any particular questions that have to come to the operation, but essentially, it's the Cerullo family taking over the business. Anthony is manager. The, his daughter Tara as director. We did provide a sketch to show the seating that would be on the outside deck, and probably one of the, well, I suppose the yacht club in this place will have waterfront dining.
Is everything in order? Kathy? Okay, thank you. Bill?
I, I'm in favor of this. I'm a very strong supporter of the Cerullo family. They and their part, former partners have been an institution in this town since pizza was introduced to Danvers, which they did. They were the only place in town you could have pizza at one time. I wish you luck. In my years of teaching, I used to use your family as an example, or your extended family as an example of how you worked in the town, came here as hard laborers, ended up with half the town, and, you know, all the liquor licenses and restaurants and that kind of stuff, but it comes with a lot of hard work, and I appreciate that, and I see how early in the morning your truck is down there in a parking lot, almost on a daily basis. I wish you luck, and I like the idea that you're going to have some outdoor seating. That'll be great out there, overlook the river. Is that going to be high enough so you can still park underneath it? Not those devices?
Everybody says that.
Yeah. Good luck, Tony.
David?
Thank you, Dan. I'm concerned that the applicant is like giving up interior seats to get these, like you're only going to use the seats outside in the climate weather, so I hate to have this family business lose interior seating space to kind of like trade off.
Well, David, that already happened. They had a roof issue where the roof almost collapsed, and William McKenzie came in, contractor, and while redoing the roof, if you, I don't know if you've been in there lately, but the area between the bar area and the restaurant area, there used to be a number of booths, and when they did that work, they removed five booths. That was the twenty seats I, I mentioned. Where they enter out onto the four hundred square foot deck, they're removing a table with four seats, and hence the, the twenty seats have already been removed, those being the booths.
I just didn't want the owner to have to give up.
Oh, I understand that.
Interior space.
Yes.
In order to get some temporary kind of seasonal.
That's a good point, because that won't be you around out there, unless he puts those heaters out there that you see.
Gas fire pit.
Thank you, Dan. I just add my compliments that the, our family is always, my mother loved the angelies on her.
Diane?
No, but you know Roger and Phyllis will make you walk all the way to the back and serve them their salad, so, but, and you'll do it. This is great. I think it's wonderful, and, and even what you did in the bar, you're just modernizing the place. You're going with how, how people like to go out now, and so it'll be beautiful. I hope you do some nice plantings out back, make, do some nice, make that, you know, that's one killer for me, is that we have this beautiful waterfront, and we don't, we haven't beautified it. So please be a start to that, and maybe you'll start a trend. Thank you.
Gardiner?
Thank you. I'm familiar with the applicant, and I'm, I'm comfortable with the application, just because I want to be consistent. I know, I know that you're tip certified. I'm not worried about that. I know that you, you have no violations, so the transfer of the ownership and stock is no issue to me. I can see by the plans that outside dining, there's, it's only accessible through the restaurant. You can't get off the deck unless you go through the restaurant, which is often a comment we make when we have other applicants who want outside dining. It's about control. Here, it's controlled because that's the only act, egress point, so I'm comfortable with that. So I, I, I wish you luck, and I'll be in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience? Yes, Matt, please go to the podium, introduce yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Matthew Doug in town, meeting member precinct one. Just a couple of questions about this deck. The deck bullet reduced the number of onsite parking spaces?
Mike?
What's there now is a dumpster, and the dumpster's being removed, so it's going in place of where the dumpster was located.
There's nothing up against that thing.
Okay, great. And then, I, I didn't see the plans, but the, the deck is elevated, I assume, right, to meet the, the back of the existing structure?
Correct.
Okay. And then just one last question. Will there be amplified music on the deck?
Good question. Thank you.
Do you have an answer? It's not being requested at this time. Do you want to speak to that?
The only thing I can answer to you inside the restaurant.
Please, if you're going to speak, you got to go up there.
I'm up to the.
Tony, please.
Name's Anthony Cerullo. Thank you. The only thing about the music, I had, we had thought about it, and I don't know if I have to request, the only thing that I, we were thinking about is there is a sound system in the restaurant for background music. We were just maybe thinking of throwing a couple of speakers out there for background, but as far as live music or anything loud, no. If the board recommends no music out there, there'll be no speakers out there. You know what I mean?
So I, I, a town manager or through the clerk, is music, is he described? Is that required for an entertainment license?
We don't have an entertainment license. That's what it shows at this time.
Correct, so would they be permitted to have music outside?
Not live entertainment, no.
But they could, music that's from the inside would be permitted?
I believe so.
If we find out different, we'll let you know.
Okay.
So I think what you're suggesting is fine.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Just a follow-up comment about that, because there are some residential units or residential homes just directly across the water there, and we know sound travels quite easily, so just to keep that in mind, sometimes locations like this, you don't, it's hard to understand the impact that you could have.
And I understand where you're coming from. Some neighbor across the way could be adversely affected.
Yeah, that's all right.
And if they complain to Sam and Joe's about the music, I'm sure they'll take that into consideration and.
Yeah, I'm sure they would.
Make an appropriate adjustment.
And if the volume is kept low, just low, just back, back, you know, the background ambient music, if it's that, you know, not something that you could hear at, at great distances, then I'll be fine.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody else in the audience?
I move we close public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. What's the will of the board?
I move we accept the application as presented.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing, none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none? Thank you. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. Good, good luck, Tony.
Thank you.
Yep. Signatures.
Thank you.
Number ten, a public hearing will be held under chapter one thirty-eight of the general laws on the application of the Tavern at one fifty-six LLC, DBA The Tavern at one fifty-six, one fifty-six Andover Street. Paul Mortimer, manager for an all-alcohol common liquor license at that location.
I thought he was bringing a sample.
You'll have to thank you for the opportunity. You'll have to excuse him for type of graphical errors. I allowed my son to do this as a school project. We're on draft. We will have these professionals done.
Thank you. I love the name.
Thank you.
Appreciate this opportunity, and we hope to have them leather-bound in professional design.
Wow.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you very much. My name is Nancy McCann. I'm here on behalf of The Tavern at one fifty-six LLC. With me tonight is Anne Vernett, who is one of the managers of the LLC, and Paul Mortimer, who you have just met, who is, we are requesting to be approved as the manager of record for the, for the liquor license, and he just gave you some handouts of menus for this proposed new restaurant. We are seeking an all-alcoholic beverage license for a new restaurant, full-service, American cuisine, as you can tell by the menu, located at one fifty-six Andover Street. The name is The Tavern at one fifty-six, and again, is a full-service restaurant, serving lunch and dinner. You do have submitted a complete ABCC application package, as well as the alcohol service policy required by the Danvers liquor license guidelines for your review. What we're proposing is a new upscale, American-style cuisine restaurant, again, serving lunch and dinner, at the location of the former Papagino's Restaurant on, on Andover Street. It's a single-story building in that section. It has about thirty-two hundred square feet. We're proposing one hundred and thirteen seats, as indicated on the application. You do have a floor plan as part of the application package. There is no outdoor seating for this restaurant. There is no dance floor for the restaurant. The hours of operation would be seven days a week, eleven AM to eleven PM. All of the servers will be tip-certified. Mr. Mortimer is tip-certified, and in fact, if you look at his resume, which was included as part of the application, he is uniquely qualified, and perhaps the most qualified manager I've brought before you for a, an alcoholic beverage license application. He has been an educator in the food service industry for many, many years. He had sixteen years as a general manager of catering services at Boston College with a, a staff of over two hundred. He's been the director of food service for New England Metropolitan Regional Vocational School, and he himself is not only tip-certified, he is also a Serve Safe certified instructor himself. He is, again, highly qualified with excellent experience. He understands the food service industry. He understands the alcohol service industry, and he has familiarized himself with the Danvers liquor license guidelines and regulations, and he understands the seriousness with which this board issues its alcoholic beverage licenses. I think that is it. You do have a complete package, and you have an, and you have a menu, so we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Kathy, is everything in order? Thank you. Diane, you want to start?
Well, this gin fizz has an egg in it. I've never seen a drink with, is it a raw egg? Is that so that you'll go running like Rocky or something? I've never seen an egg in a drink before.
You know?
Yeah, that is different. Wow. Who's Rachel? You've got all these names of things and a pound, steak tips. A pound of marinated steak tips is the dinner?
Mm-hmm. You get to take something off.
For the next three meals. Oh my goodness, this looks great. This is great. I, I love the little design on the front, the name. Somebody just said to me, you know, we really need a pub in Danvers. We don't really, so, good for you. But I am going to go to the board on my next question, which is, is one of our state liquor licenses? Where is this liquor license coming from?
Kathy, do you know that?
I do. This is the second of the district licenses, so this is the one fourteen Route One.
Oh, okay.
Zone.
All right, and, and so, is that all we put on one fourteen Route One is two?
No, there are ten licenses.
Right.
The first license was given to Blue Comma.
Yep.
In the downtown district.
Okay.
This license would be the one fourteen Route One.
Okay.
And the other eight would, could go in either or. But once they go in, they stay.
Right, but, but we, because we have been discussing making sure that we're working on our downtown, so I'm just making sure, but I, I think, I think this is a great location for something. You have the parking, you know, and I think you'll be successful, and I'm always sorry, you know, I hope your food is good, but I look at restaurants and your dollar signs to me for the town, and that's my job. So I, I like your location. I like your parking. I think your resume is amazing, and I, I hope you run some classes in there, maybe to teach us all how to cook, but I, I really wish you luck, and I would definitely support you getting one of those licenses. I'm a little cheap with those licenses right now, but I think you're a great candidate. Thank you.
Bill?
I have no question with this. I'm very impressed with the application and the applicant background, and I think it'll be a very beneficial restaurant for the community, and like Diane, I like the meals tax coming into the town.
What's that?
Yep.
David?
Yeah. It'd be wonderful to have that space used, you know. I think through the years, it was kind of underused as a Papagino's anyway, so you'll bring some life to that parking lot and that space. It sounds great. Good luck.
This is a public hearing? Anyone? Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot you.
No worries. So Attorney McCann was preemptive in my usual questions, which is tip certification. I see by the application, the hours you'll be onsite is sixty-five hours a week, which is, we're always looking for the liquor license manager to be very present on the, on the ground, on the property. Attorney McCann did call out your resume, and I see you have extensive food service background. Do you have any liquor license management background? Have you worked in, in a position where you were the manager of a formal liquor license or retail liquor sales?
When, excuse me, when my resume, I don't know if you see it, but at Boston College,
When my resume, I don't know if you see it, but at Boston College, I was responsible for sending the bartenders, who were tips-trained, out on campus, along with all the full-service bars.
Okay.
So I didn't actually tips-train them, but they were all tips-trained, and they were my responsibility to make certain they did everything correctly.
Okay. And I'm presuming there was no incidents that you...
No.
I didn't see your full resume. I saw the application that listed your food service, extensive food service background. I just wanted to make sure you've had some hands-on practical experience managing lic- liquor license, and, and employees who themselves have to conform to the training.
Yes, I have.
Okay, thank you. Those are my normal questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Good enough. This is a public hearing. Anyone in the public with any questions?
May we close the public hearings?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none, thank you. What's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the application as presented.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Thank you, and good luck. When do you plan on opening?
Hopefully, September 1st.
September 1st, thank you.
Thank you very much.
The board will discuss and consider a vote to approve the transfer of the land known as 3 Gilbert Lane, situated in Danvers, Essex County, Massachusetts, to the Town of Danvers Affordable Housing Trust. Mr. Chairman, do we have somebody to present this?
I was going to kick off.
You're going to kick off?
Yeah.
As the...
Chairman, would you like me to step down?
Yes.
Okay.
Guy is going to recuse himself. Doesn't have to.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gardner Trask, selectman, but in this capacity, I'm, I'm speaking as the chairman of the Danvers Affordable Housing Trust. As you know, the selectmen also are on various committees at the, at the will of the board to represent the selectmen and the town at various committees. I have been on the Danvers Affordable Housing Trust since its inception. I've been voted the chairman of it and represent them in this discussion. As we have discovered or discussed in the past, I'll make a presentation, just an initial foray into this, and then, I don't see, oh, the errands here, still here. We have members of the trust here who can answer questions after I give you some initial information, and I'm certain we'll want to hear from the neighbors, your discretion. As you know, the Danvers Affordable Housing Trust has a mission to promote and facilitate the creation of affordable housing opportunities in the town of Danvers. We are not landlords. We don't want to be. It's not part, it's actually prohibited by the nature of our trust. What we do do, however, is facilitate the transfer of land, the transfer of properties, and facilitate opportunities with private developers and private parties to increase affordable housing opportunities in town. Often, affordable, when we say affordable opportunities, it gets lost, the nuance gets lost. We are in the Boston median income zone, which means if you are a family of four, and you're, by the 2017 guidelines, you would be considered 80% affordable eligible, making over $82,000 a year. We're not talking about low income. We're talking about affordability. Affordability, that's a, that's a number not, you know, most of the, I wouldn't say most. A large number of entry-level employees of the town of Danvers would certainly qualify for some of these opportunities, just based on, my daughter's a teacher in Danvers High. I know what her starting salary is. So I can say that affordable is not equal to low income. There's a vast need for affordable housing opportunities. We often hear, as selectmen here, and just as neighbors and citizens here, wow, you can't afford to live in Danvers anymore. Well, it's a supply and demand issue. And what we're trying to do is help increase some supply. And in this case, we're trying to take depressed or dilapidated or fallow land that the town owns and facilitate the building of a unit. We have come before you before. Sometimes we come to town meeting based on the logistics of the property. Sometimes we come right to the selectman based on the logistics of the property. And so, in this case, we're doing it again. We're coming to the town. Throughout the year, the Affordable Housing Trust tries to review opportunities. We look at the town properties the town owns. Some are just not amenable to building. They have various problems or issues that don't allow for us to pursue them. There's a short list of ones that we do want to look at as consideration. Gilbert Lane is one of them. On 5/4, we did let the selectmen know that we were reaching out to the neighbors. This is always a chicken and egg issue. Who do we talk to first? Do we talk to the selectmen before we talk to neighbors? Do we talk to the neighbors before we talk to the selectmen? We felt, based on our last experience with the selectmen, we wanted to talk to the neighbors, understand their concerns, get some feedback, talk to them, and then present to the selectmen. But we wanted you to be aware, we were talking to the neighbors, so you didn't all of a sudden get a cold call and wonder what was going on. On 5/4, we let the select, on, on May 4th, we let the selectmen know we were reaching out to the neighbors. On 5/15, we reached, we had a meeting of the Affordable Housing Trust, which is all our meetings, our public meetings, but this one specifically invited all the neighbors. We sent out a, a quarter number of invitations to all the butters and surrounding area, and invited them to come. We had a very productive meeting in this room. I felt we offered the opportunity for all feedback and to ebb and flow. And there was concerns and good issues that were raised, that some, that we didn't understand. For example, that that property would need a well. It's not on town water. That was news to us. Obviously, concerns that were raised included, and they'll probably be expressed, and I would hope they were, are, the topography of the land. There is area flooding, based on the area around there, sometimes considerable, and we would have to consider that. There are, there are questions about wetlands, and I'll talk about how we're going to look at those shortly. And there were some things that we offered and talked about. The, the process would be, if the selectmen were to grant the land to the trust, and we'll talk about the pricing of that in a moment, then we would go and we would have the land surveyed, where the trust would have the land surveyed, the trust would work with the wetlands to get all, make sure all the wetlands mitigation was covered. We would get clear delineation. We would determine if it is a buildable lot or not. And if so, where on the lot you could build. The trust would take on all of that expense, and then, if it were to be buildable, we would go forward. If not, then we wouldn't. But we would take all of, and when, if we were to go forward, we would, as we have with past properties, invite the neighbors to help us in the development of an RFP. A request proposal would include what we expect the affordability levels to be. We talked about maintaining as much of the foliage as possible. There's some old growth trees on the property, and whatever else we can reasonably accommodate based on the neighbors and what they want. This is an R1 zone. It's only residence, can only be a single-family home in this property. And we're looking to pursue the opportunity to use home funds. There's a federal program that provides funds to each town, city and town in Massachusetts. It's called the Home Fund. We've used it in the past to have first-time home buyer programs and other very specific programs that the federal process allows us to spend the money on. It would allow us, and we get a certain amount of money, and we have to use it within a certain period of time. Otherwise, it goes back to actually a state-level fund, which then gets redispersed around. We'd have no control over where that disbursement went. At this time, Affordable Housing Trust has home funds, just over $128,000. We have to use it, or at least commit it by the end of June, before, otherwise it goes back into the funding. What we're coming to you before, before the board is to ask for the transfer of 3 Gilbert Lane, the property 3 Gilbert Lane, to the trust, for us to then go ahead and do the wetland surveys, the surveying, and the other action items we talked about, and if buildable, to purchase the land from the town for the sum of $128,000.
Repeat that.
$128,000, based on the buildable, the fact that it is buildable after we do, and the trust will spend it.
Subject to that it is.
Subject to, subject to the fact that it's buildable. We have members of the Davis Housing Authority, John Alden's here. It's a committee, if you don't recall, we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 members, a selectman representative, that's myself, Carla King, who is a affordable housing advocate, Don Gates is a banker, we have Trish Lantini, who's a real estate professional, John Alden is a construction professional, Stacy Burnson is an affordable housing professional. She works for the city of Peabody and does similar work in Peabody. And you, last meeting, accepted Rachel Grisbeck as our legal representative. So we have a number of people who are experts in their own fields, who help, who volunteer to help the trust and help look at this. So we respectfully ask that you consider transferring the land for the sum of $128,000 based on the buildable opportunity. I'll take some questions, and if not, one of the things that I remind the board is, because we all do this, all, when I say all, I mean all the selectmen who serve on different committees, we have checked the town council. I am allowed to vote as a selectman on this item as well. I'm speaking here now as the chairman of the Affordable Housing Trust. When I return to that seat, it's representing as a selectman. It's no different than someone serving on the DTAC, voting on a stop sign, and then coming and voting on a stop sign again, pro or con, however they, however they decide to vote. I'm happy to take questions. Do you want me to address as the chairman of the Affordable Housing Trust?
If you, if I may. You started off saying that this lot needs a well.
Yes.
Does it need septic?
Yes.
And what are the rules and regulations for the distance between septic and well?
We will, we will work all of that out. I don't know if it is a...
You've only got a lot that's 100 by 150, correct?
We will certainly follow all building concern, all the building legal, yes.
The lot is 100 by 150.
Okay.
And from my limited knowledge of septic and wells, they've got to be 150 feet apart. Now, I may be mistaken in the town of Danvers regulations, but I think that's something you should know before you...
So the next step is for us to go through all of the permitting and zoning and surveying?
And that's a simple question that you could have the answer. You wouldn't have to do anything, or maybe not.
Correct. We, we have not pursued all of the, all of the nuances of the zoning, and we will do that. Our clock is ticking that we, we would like the transfer contingent on all zoning passing, all wetlands passing, all of the appropriate rules and regulations.
I understand what you want, and you're under the gun, time-wise.
Yep.
I'm telling you, you're rushing, and you didn't think through this once you heard there was a well, and your real estate professional didn't mention it, your building professional didn't mention it.
I'm not, I'm not, I do not agree with that we're rushing. I agree with, we're taking methodical steps to follow the process to determine if it's an opportunity. We will, next step, if you pursue, if you allow this to go forward contingent, we will follow all the proper processes and steps as any other development or purchaser would do. If, if you, if you're accurate, and we are unable to do so, we won't. But corner to corner on that lot is more, is certainly more than the amount of time.
Right.
So corner to corner on that lot, even if your recollection is correct, and I'm not saying it's not, a well in one corner and septic in the other corner...
It would.
Certainly would work. And so, we will follow through and figure out all that planning. But again, that's also subject to whether there's wetlands encroachment. And maybe corner to corner doesn't work, and the whole thing goes away at that point. It's all, this is a transfer contingent on following all of that process determining the, the opportunity to build.
Thank you.
Are there any questions as the trust chairman?
Yes, please.
Thank you. So when did you receive this $128,000?
We receive funds throughout the course of the year in dispersments.
Okay.
And we did not have an opportunity to do a first-time home buyers. We've tried that in the past and it's not worked. We've used the mother, money for other programs, and we actively seek to use that money. This year, there was no opportunity to disperse those funds. We have, in the past, given back funds, year after year.
Yeah, I'm a little, I'm a little confused as to having a, you know, again, I'm greedy, and $128,000 available for affordable housing with what we go through. And again, I'm speaking to you as our chairman. So why, with two great projects going on downtown, could you not have committed that to affordable? We have just had somebody here who's putting in 10 one-bedrooms. There must have been an incentive there to make those affordable, one-bedroom. We have, again, it only has to be committed, so it doesn't have to be complete. And then we had Ideal Baby Shoe, who's got 14 units going in. So why can't, why couldn't we have, which is what we're trying to do, is get affordable housing downtown, I believe, and I don't know whether it can be used in conjunction with 40R?
No, it can't.
No, okay.
So, really good question. We actively pursue projects. We went to the Ideal Baby Shoe. Now, remember that as part of their permitting process, part of the, we went to the ZBA because they, we sent representatives in the Affordable Housing Trust, and through cooperation with them, already got a number of affordable units in that building. We actually went back and approached them and said, if we pay the delta between the rent that you charge for market rent and the rent that you charge for affordable housing rent, and paid the delta for a certain amount of time, could we do that? But we have tight constraints about what we can actually spend the money on, based on the federal program itself. Brick and mortar. We have to spend brick and mortar is primarily it, or we have to spend on education, or programs that get to brick and mortar. That's why we can do first-time home buyer programs. It gets to a brick and mortar. We can do it by purchasing property, or we could actually purchase buildings. But again, that's in, in conflict with our trust mission and our trust language. We, we're not, we're not landlords. We don't want to be landlords. We have to find outside parties, outside, we facilitate outside private interests to do these things. We actively try to spend this money. We do have to give back money every year, and we're sad for it, but it can't go to our Affordable Housing Trust account by federal law, and we have to follow the federal guidelines for disbursement.
Mr. Chairman, is this an appropriate time to ask what the assessed value of this land is?
Certainly, you can ask that.
What is the assessed value of this land?
Do you look, Kathy?
I do not.
We have, we have, the town manager has the same chart I have.
Current, the current assessment on the property is $255,000.
And it abuts 3 people?
Yes, that's correct. There should have been a diagram in our packet.
Yeah, I see it.
Yep. It abuts 3 people directly, and then across the street from Gilbert Lane is 2 other properties that we also contacted and invited to the meeting as well.
And we just had somebody here earlier, and according to Dan, finding a wetland map is not difficult. So I do not look at wetland maps, but Dan, I know does, and so have you looked at it? Do we...
So the process calls for a wetlands delineation when you go to, when you go to do that. There had been some in the past. There had been some discussions in the past about, you know, some, some anecdotal discussions in the past about whether those are wetlands or not. So before we went through the expense of determining the wetland and the, and the encroachment into the property, we would, this would be no different if a private investor came to us and said, can I buy this property? They would, they would buy a contingent, and, you know, if we find out based on where truly there are wetlands today, whether we can build on there or not, because we'll follow every single setback, every single zoning obligation. We do not want to come before the ZBA for any relief. That's not our intent. Our intent is to follow all of the current zoning and all of the current wetlands.
Okay. And Mr. Chairman, before any, are you going to allow people to speak?
Well, I want to hear from the board first.
Okay. If you do, one of the comments that was made to me, so I just want to make myself clear, I don't know who said it, that somebody's been taking care of part of this property, and I just want everybody to know that that means nothing to me. Squatters rights mean nothing to me. I'm worked, you know, I believe you, you own what you own, and that's it. Very nice you take care of town property. So please, neighbors, don't, don't tell me that. That will have no effect on me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David?
Thank you, Dan. Ordinarily, despite my respect for Gardner and the, and the trust, I would say absolutely not, because the last time there was a request to transfer land to the trust, I said I'd never do it again, because then all of the people in my age group, who are taxpayers in Danvers say, what are you giving away land for? No matter how much the land is worth, it should go into the general fund to reduce the taxes, even if it's by one penny. However, I understand that the town would receive $138,000, which is a discounted...
128.
128.
Yes.
I'm not assuming that that's half what it's worth, because the assessed value seems to me a little high, especially if there are going to be environmental concerns. And if the trust is, I'd like to, before I would commit to anything, I want to hear what the neighbors have to say. But my ordinary rule of saying no would be postponed until the next one that you asked asked for, and I would support this because the town would be getting 128, and so I'll be able to justify that. I'll try to justify that to the people who will yell at me.
Yep, another justification point you may consider is that we're taking an empty piece of land, if this were to come to fruition, building a property, providing a new opportunity for homeowners in town, and putting this back on the tax rolls at 100%.
Yes and no. We had that discussion before. There was a piece of land down in Woodvale that hadn't paid its taxes for 20 years, and the argument was, well, gee, we'll finally get some taxes. And I said, well, gee, why didn't we send, sell it 20 years ago and not wait around and put the money in the fund then? Okay.
True enough.
So, I hear you. That's a good, and I respect everything you put into this.
I can't, I can't change history. I can only change the future.
So, ordinarily, I would say no, with 128 coming into the town, and because of my respect for the work of the trust and the goals of the trust, it's, yeah, so there I am. But, I want to hear what the neighbors have to say, and I'm always of the view that if adjacent property owners want to pay and purchase the property at the assessed or fair market value, those adjacent property owners should have first whack at it. But, that's, thank you, Dan, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Bill?
I've got a couple of questions. First of all, the question is why? Why does it have to be a well here? How close is town water to this lot?
So, one of the things we found out, very interesting, the residents of Gilbert Lane do not want town water. They specifically said, we prefer our wells. We think they're better and cleaner, and they did not want to go through. They can explain to you better their reasoning, but I went in thinking, wouldn't this be a great opportunity to get town water? And they said, we don't want that opportunity. I'll let them answer that question if you don't mind.
That is my question. My question is, why isn't the town water? Where is the closest town water? Riverside, Riverview Avenue?
It's, I think you gave us the most accurate answer the other day. Oh, was you? Oh, yes, this gentleman did.
Hold on, we'll hear from them later.
Okay.
I'm just hearing from them.
Well, I'm trying to answer Bill's question from someone who goes and answers.
And so, you can't answer the question.
Okay. It's far up the street, it's well up, it's a distance up the street, and it would have to be carried farther down the main street, down River, Riverview Avenue, and then into Gilbert.
Okay. I have a house in Danvers that actually was built with a well and a septic system in the 1980s. I think those regulations are the same today. Dan hit upon this about the separation of well and leaching field. The thing is, it's not just 100 feet. A leaching field is not a spot. A leaching field runs anywhere from 50 to 100 feet from a particular junction box with a minimum of three channels. So, you're dealing with a sizable area somewhere close to probably an eighth of an acre or so, just for the leaching field. I don't see any space in this lot where you can separate a well from a leaching field by that much, plus the fact that if you put a leaching field in most of this lot, you're going to be possibly infringing upon the wells of neighbors, adjacent neighbors. So, I think that's a very important part, because you have to have 100 feet from the leaching field, from the well to the leaching field. Granted, the leaching field is surface. The well, you have no idea how deep it's going to be. I found that out. You can go anywhere from 75 feet to 400, 500 feet deep, and they can be adjacent lots, because when I did my due diligence, in that respect, on Valley Road, there were seven wells, and they went anywhere from 38 feet to 750 feet on lots right along the way. I don't know what your wells are, where you people are living, but I'm sure that some of those may be several hundred feet deep down there, because otherwise, you're going to get water, you're going to get surface water intrusion from salt water within a very short period of time. I have a-
I agree, and I agree that that may be a mitigating factor. I look at the surrounding properties and see they're similar size. The one right next door to it is exactly 100 by 150, same size as the lot that we're considering. The one across this, kitty corner across the street is 100 by 149, 174 if you consider that curve. But, we're looking at a similar sized lots, and if that becomes, again, this is, transfer is contingent on it being buildable, if that becomes a mitigating factor and we can't do it, we're done. That's, there's no, there's no moving forward. The trust won't pursue any, the trust is not interested in pursuing any ZBA action, or we will follow all our current zoning laws, all our current wetland laws. If we cannot do that, we aren't going to pursue this.
Mr. Chairman, may I continue to ask questions? I kind of got cut off in this deal.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you asked a question.
Those houses that are on Gilbert Lane, I believe, were built about 40 years ago. I may be mistaken a little. I'm somewhat familiar with the neighborhood, but I think they were built in the 1970s at that point. The regulations for, later than that?
Eighty-five.
The nineties?
Nineties, okay.
Eighties, nineties.
All right, then maybe the regulations are the same, because I was just concerned that the regulations might be, might have been a lot easier to put septic systems in with wells. But, I just can't see that lot, that size, being able to have a septic system and a well, and not be within 100 feet of a neighbor's well or septic system, or in its own lot, be separated that much. There's just not enough room in that lot. It's a small lot. Plus, it's all frag mighty grass, from what I understand, and to me, that's wetland.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, while I'm 100% in favor of the town selling any lots of land that are buildable, certainly to the Affordable Housing Trust, and we capture that in funds, and I'm certainly in favor of using up those home funds so we don't lose it, I'm very disappointed that you weren't able to understand the septic and well piece of this lot before you came to us, asking us to sell the land to the trust. And you need to know this by the end of June, is that correct?
Correct.
Right, so you are rushing. So, it's very problematic for me to support something that I think is not going to happen. So, you don't know, I'm not a wetlands expert, even though the state tried to pass a law that all real estate agents should be wetlands experts. We'll see what the board wants to do, and I would like to hear some comments from the neighbors if you're done with your presentation.
Just one more comment, and then, if I might, because Aaron Henry is now the person who's responsible for guiding, from the town, guiding the trust. He may have some details, if you have any questions about the transfer opportunities and so on and so forth. But, we have to take this in steps, incremental steps. The first step was to, before we spend any trust money on investigation, on surveys, on wetland delineation, on any of those efforts, we wanted to know the opportunity, which is why we have framed this as, we would ask the board to transfer the land contingent on all of those conditions being done.
We understand that.
So, we didn't, I don't feel we're being rushed. I think we're taking a methodical step that says, first, let's talk to the neighbors, get their feelings and understandings. Talk to the selectmen, get their direction, and then-
In a matter of time, unless you have something new to add.
No.
Thank you.
I'm all set.
Thank you.
If you have one more question-
Do you want to come back up here, or?
Yeah, I'll come back up there.
Okay. So, at this time, it's not a public hearing, but I will allow comments. I don't want people repeating themselves or repeating what somebody else says, but we'll hear some legitimate concerns or comments, and who would like to start? Thank you. Introduce yourself and-
Good evening. My name is Gail McManus. I live at Ford Gilbert Lane. Thank you for letting me speak.
On the map here, which one is Ford? You know-
We are across the street from the proposed lot.
Cross the street, thank you, I see the number now. Thank you.
In 2018, the North Shore Home Consortium reported that the Danvers Affordable Housing Trust allotted home funds to purchase 3 Gilbert Lane, 2018. A year after the decision was made regarding 3 Gilbert Lane, and two weeks after the funds were recommitted, a meeting was held with the neighbors on May 15th. So, there's just a few timeline things here that are concerning. According to the Danvers Affordable Housing Minutes, a trustee said the town would give land for zero, but it was an issue when Lorraine Road, which is another Danvers Affordable Housing Trust property, was sold because the town could have gotten money for it. One trustee said paying $100,000 plus for the lot would buy some clout with the selectmen.
So, I'm going to ask everybody to keep your remarks to Gilbert Lane.
Okay.
Lorraine?
Sure.
Street has already happened. They're building a house that's in the past.
Mm-hmm. Okay. The proposal, this proposal has been in the works for over a year. Abutters only learned of it last month, because on April 17th, town manager Stephen Bartha told the trust he did not want a repeat of Lorraine Road. Sorry. So, on May 3rd, 2019, Susan Fletcher sent letters to the abutters about a meeting on a potential purchase of property for affordable housing. On the very same day, Fletcher sent a letter to the North Shore Home Consortium stating the town proposed to reserve all the remaining home funds, $128,464, to buy 3 Gilbert Lane. Fletcher stated that a memo was sent to town manager and the board of selectmen requesting to buy Gilbert Lane, and the board of selectmen was to vote on it in June. So, at that meeting, we were informed, at the meeting that we went to, we were informed that the trust had to use or lose the 128,000 of affordable housing funds. They did not want to give the money back where it could be reallocated for a more beneficial project. They put all their eggs in this one basket, as opposed to, you know, numerous housing projects that could maybe benefit more people than just one family. So, we also voiced our concerns at that meeting about drainage flooding, loss of open space, lack of town water on the street, and an impact on our wells. Nevertheless, the trust voted to request the town sell 3 Gilbert Lane to them. One member who voted wasn't even present during the deliberation. She walked in just before the vote. This vote was clearly for our benefit, because the request had already been sent. So, one more thing. According to Fletcher, at a November 28th, 2019, 2018 meeting, trust management, Danvers has an embarrassment of riches in affordable housing funds. They obviously don't know what to do with it all, so why not give it to the town rather than allocate the funds for more beneficial projects, as I said, sorry. So, I am adamantly opposed to the sale of this property. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening. Steve Cassagran, Ford Gilbert Lane. I'll try to be brief. Thank you for your time, board. Back in the November 28th, 18 meeting minutes, the building inspector went down there, Rich Maloney, and stated that Gilbert was controlled by open space. To back him up, on January of 19 of this year, Fletcher said it's part of a cluster subdivision, cannot be broken up, it's open space. Cluster subdivision is to protect open space or environmentally sensitive lands, including hazard prone. I have the pictures I'd like to give to you. You can see some of the flooding at Gilbert. I've personally been flooded, okay? When the tide gets high, there's no room for the water to go out, it just swells up. And we've been really concerned that the trust is looking at this wooded, wet, green space. And the rep over here, Mr. Alden, even stated back in those meeting minutes, that there are lots of lots to look at up at the former King's Grand. And so, for some reason, they want to come ruin the charm and character of our conservation land, right by the Danvers River, right by the seawater. It's a shame. I could go on and on. This whole Lorraine Road situation's been going on for three years. We couldn't handle something like that in our neighborhood. It's crazy what you've done to the, we went over there and knocked on doors. They said, you guys knocked on doors, the trust knocked on doors after it was a done deal. We didn't find out, no one knocked on our door. We sent out six letters. The trust sent out six letters to Abutters. They've been so under the table and so, just makes me upset. They've been just not above board whatsoever, and many people have been trying to stop this, and I'll tell you what, it's wetlands, we, you know, I see it. I've lived there for over 20 years. We've got over 100 years of experience of people that live down there, and it's a shame that the trust wants to do that. I'm adamantly against this. I'm for affordable housing. I think, you know, they're going to need subpumps, you're gonna, we're worried about our wells, and I thank you for your consideration and your time.
Thank you. Somebody else? Thank you.
My approach, I just want to give you a couple things. Unfortunately, we have five. These are just some of the C-levels.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Thank you.
My name is Richard Renard. I live at 38 Riverview Avenue. And this, my lot is one that would be south of 3 Gilbert Lane. In 1991, when we purchased the property, we were told personally by, then it was Sue Madison, now it's Sue Madison Fletcher, that 3 Gilbert Lane would never be built on because it was conservation land. One of the reasons why my wife and I purchased that land is because of the buffers that we had. I'm an arborist by trade, and I love trees, and, you know, so it's just the protecting of these natural resources that I'm here talking about. So, when we built, we complied with Concom conditions that they gave us. We had to put out sandbags, the whole nine yards, that would obviously indicate that it would be conservation land that they were trying to protect, and we abided by everything. A November 1994 plan prepared for the construction, excuse me, 5 Gilbert Lane, identified a significant bordering vegetated wetland, BVW, on 3 Gilbert Lane. And you have that map on your, the papers that I just gave you. It's on the second page, huh? Yes. Which indicates wetlands. So, half of our wetland acreage has been lost to development, causing increased storm damage in depleted fish, wildlife, and plant populations. In the natural state, wetlands serve as floodways to convey storm waters safely away and act as buffers. Wetlands provide temporary storage of floodwaters, allowing floods to recede slowly. If this land is changed, it is going to totally flood out 38 Riverview Avenue, along with number 5 Gilbert Lane, because this is actually like a storage area. When you have a lot of rains, it is, it's storing a lot of this water. Each home that abuts 3 Gilbert Lane reports basement flooding on a regular basis. Each of us have a subpump, and are very concerned that a loss of a lot that stores storm water and acts as a buffer will result in additional flooding. Just watch, just watch the news, and you'll see that we're experiencing extreme heat events, storm surges, extreme rain, and sea level rising. If you look at the Commonwealth Sea Level Rise Coastal Flooding Maps, which you have that I passed out, you'll see the Riverview Ave. and Gilbert Lane are in the storm surge areas with the highest degree of exposure. As our temperature rises, we can expect more rain in the winter, and that means more flooding. When our community should be looking to be more resilient by preserving wetlands to store more water in the future, why are we even thinking of developing resources areas? Not only is 3 Gilbert a stormwater resource, it is a habitat for dozens of rabbits and robins and woodpeckers, deers, coyotes. I mean, we have everything in here. And the wooded area has numerous benefits. It reduces energy consumption by providing shade and evaporative cooling through transpiration. Improves air quality by absorbing carbon dioxide, ozone, and particulate matter, and by producing oxygen. It reduces wind speed in directing airflow. It reduces stormwater runoff and soil erosion, and provides natural flood and microclimate control. And this is also a quality of life thing down in that area. I'm not, I don't want to hop on some of the Lorraine Road issues. My wife and I were down there on Saturday, and we spent two hours down there just taking pictures. It's a disgrace.
Again, thank you.
I apologize.
But, I appreciate the comments you made about your area and the wetlands, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
He lives at 3-
Right in the front or the back?
Right. I'm sorry, I'm going to go backwards again. I'm upside down and around. 38, where's your, where's your septic and where's your well? You have 100 by 150? You have a hundred by a hundred and fifty lot. Where's your septic and where's your well?
Front of the house.
So you're on the two front corners?
We have... My well is in the back of the house.
In the back, behind the house, or closer to three Jalbert?
My well would be closer to three Jalbert.
Okay, and where's your septic?
Is in the front of the house.
Closer to Riverview?
Closer to Riverview, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other neighbors that have anything new to add?
Thanks. Yep, my name is Sean Hagerty. We're new to Danvers, actually gonna be a year in, I think, yeah, Monday?
Well, welcome.
So we've been coming up to Danvers for a long time. We have a boat at Liberty. We've been there for ten years. We love the area so much, we moved up here.
So which house is yours?
Fifty-one Riverview.
Fifty-one Riverview across the street.
Yep, so we're right across the street from Rick and Beth. And I guess my first question would be, who typically gets notified in these situations? We never got a notification. I found out from our neighbors. So to me, I heard the comment about rushed, and this definitely felt rushed to me. In this experience, I've lived through different experiences in a prior life in another town, and changes in the landscape definitely changes water. We had, and I know I can speak, I've been out in my waders since we lived here. Back in November, I was trying to clear the drain.
So to answer your question, if this was construction, abutters within three hundred feet would be notified?
Okay.
But if somebody's selling a piece of property, they don't notify their neighbors?
Okay. All right, so I'm just curious.
And if your neighbor is selling the house next door, out of courtesy, they may tell you, but it's no obligation to tell you they're selling.
Okay. So I guess on the other note then, as someone who would be doing that, I'd like to know if a lot's buildable, so...
I'm sure the housing trust would like to know too.
Right. So I think that definitely feels rushed to me. If I'm gonna engage in any kind of real estate arrangement, I'm gonna find out if it's billable, buildable, because I'm not gonna sit on a useless piece of property. And then I just wanted to comment that it definitely floods. I literally have been out there in my waders, and if changes to the landscape will definitely change the way the water flows there now, and I can't imagine it would get any better. I've never witnessed construction helping out a water situation before. Our house in Bedford, where we lived previously, was affected deeply by water, by construction and then water in the basin, which we never had until they did the construction, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Please?
Where should I go?
We can take that microphone down and bring it to her?
This is the microphone right here.
Right here. Good, thanks.
Hello. Thank you. My name is Beth Renard.
Beth, you want to put that mic close to you so that you can catch it?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight.
Okay. Yep, thank you.
And my primary concerns are our well. A new well coming onto the property. We're not sure how that would affect our water service. I am aware that other properties in Danvers that have wells and have had development near them have had wells either fail or lose pressure. Very concerned about that. I'm concerned about whether or not the town will require the town water to come down the street and whether the town would in fact then require us to pay a betterment for that. I'm concerned about that. About ten years ago, on the opposite side where Steve Casagrande lives, there was so much flooding there that the town came in and dug a long trench, they call it a French drain, and dug, I don't know, maybe it was four feet wide, from the end of, from the beginning of Jalbert to the end, and put stone in there so the water would have somewhere to go. So I'm concerned with hardscape and the removal of this area that's sort of depressed. You know, we're gonna have to do that again on the other side of the street. Very concerned about that. So I'm concerned about the water coming on the street, whether there'd be a betterment. Concerned about ripping up the street that was just paved about three months ago. That whole Riverview Avenue with Jalbert Lane was graded and repaved. Concerned about that. I understand there's a moratorium with respect to digging up streets for a period of time. Just concerned whether it's gonna be repaved curb-to-curb or not, if that does happen. Of course, we're concerned, there are a lot of mature trees behind our house that do absorb a lot of water. There's a lot of vegetation there, I don't know if you can buy it, but that absorbs some water. When we have rains, and not even heavy rains, our backyard floods now. So what's gonna happen when that resource is gone? I did make a public records request on May twenty-eighth, and the city clerk's office has been great and provided me with some of those documents. Haven't received anything from the trust that we asked for. Just curious about what the spending has been. Is it in your report? Haven't seen that. Asked about other contracts with Habitat for Humanity. We're very concerned about their progress in the other projects that they're working on. We've seen a lot of the projects that they're doing that are very slow moving.
So again, I ask that you stay with Jalbert Lane.
Okay. The reason I mention that is because when I asked Sue Fletcher, what, who would the likely person or entity be when RFP was issued? She said, "Well, it's probably gonna be Habitat for Humanity because they're the only ones that have bid on our other projects." So that's why we're concerned about that. So I'm concerned that we haven't gotten the records that we requested, and it's well over the ten days. I'm concerned about the wells.
Records from where?
From the housing trust.
Not from the city clerk, town clerk?
No, they go through the public records officer, which is the city clerk's office.
That's fine. I just was making joke.
So I echo what my neighbors have said. We're very concerned about this, and I hope that you will consider our concerns. I was happy to hear your concerns being expressed about the scaffolding, and I hope that, you know, you will put that much thought and deliberation into this.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So I just wanna clarify and have clarified just a couple of things. One is, again, I live on Cabot Road, and tearing up a road happens daily. So if it's a new road that goes down and there's reason to go under it, I would hope that they would tear it up. So that would be one thing. But Mr. Town Clerk, betterments. So can we do... I've never heard of this, but can we force somebody to use town water? And have we ever charged a betterment bringing town water down a road?
So you heard from the folks early tonight?
Mm-hmm. I don't care about that. It was just said that, can they be forced? So I'm just asking the town manager, can they be forced? And if so, would they be forced to pay a betterment?
I believe they can and they would.
Okay. So they can be forced to switch to town water?
I believe that's correct, but I can report back with... I'm looking at Mr. Henry over here too. It's been a lo...
I think you can.
Yeah. I don't know that that's typically...
Aaron, up front. Aaron, I have to go to the microphone.
Can, while he's meandering, can and do are different. I think most of the towns I've worked in, you would see a line go in, and if there was an active, if there was a healthy septic, there would be a timing issue in terms of when that connection would happen.
The towns I've worked in, there's a regulation that when a sale or some reason comes up, you have to flip over to the public service, but until that time, you do not have to. But I'm not sure about the betterment.
But just to be clear, there are no, I mean, there are no plans at this point for the...
Did we do that on Ryan Road?
I'd have to report back off the top of my head. I don't have an answer.
I think that they had problems with this.
I think we have history in Danvers of requiring water to go in certain areas, however, and you've gotta pay a betterment tax. But I don't believe you can require the person to connect to town water if there's no health reason. I know that I didn't have to connect to town water, but I do have to pay for sewer water that goes by my property in frontage as a betterment.
Was that done?
Nope, I'd just like to have accurate information.
Mm-hmm. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Monique Jalbert. I live at five Jalbert Lane. No, it was not my fault the street was named after me. However, when my husband built the house in roughly between nineteen ninety-four and nineteen ninety-six, he had to output roughly thirty-six thousand dollars to build out the cul-de-sac. He also had to... I'm sorry?
I couldn't hear what you said.
Roughly thirty-six thousand dollars to build the cul-de-sac, to put the cul-de-sac in. I believe if I'm not mistaken, the Jalbert Lane stopped roughly at the Casa Grande, McManus driveway, prior to my husband building our house. Not only that, he also had to bring the town water down to the corner so he could have the fire hydrant thing, that thing, near, like, within footage, something two-hundred-and-fifty feet of his property. Also, we had a bunch of conservation land in the back, so that required our house to be pushed forward on the lot, which we already lost lot because of the cul-de-sac. We also had... Our house is literally fifteen feet from the lot line of one corner of our front foundation. So at the time when he built it, he was under no impression that... He was also given the same information that the Renards were given, that they were not going to be building on that lot. Otherwise, I think he would have maybe made a little bit more push to try to push our house back a little bit so we would have a little more buffer zone between a potential house. Now, that lot, three Jalbert Lane, is right now partially some of my front yard. And the reason being is when he built the house, once the land was leveled back out and smoothed out from the construction zone and everything like that, he's just kept it mode. So we try to keep it neat. Haven't put any buildings or anything like that on it, but it's part of my green, part of our green space. We've all tried to keep it as fresh and clean as we possibly can. One thing that concerns me, like, really concerns me. I'm a newer resident to Danvers. I grew up in Beverly. I was always told, like, you know, Danvers is very strong and help, and, you know, very forward with their residents and everything. I had to feel that we've gotten this very backhanded pat on your head, yes, this is what's gonna happen, go away, feeling from the meeting the last time, was very disheartening. And I felt that there was really no listening done on behalf of the trust from the people that were residing on that street. We really didn't get that kind of comfort level that we actually were heard. We were just kind of felt like we were shoved off to the side a bit. And I'm not very happy about that. And one last thing, if I may. About four or five years ago, I approached the town to find out about that lot, to find out if it was something I could purchase so we could keep it exactly like it is. And I was told it will not be for sale. So, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else? From the Butters? No, thank you. Thank you all for your input and thoughts. So what's the will of the board? We are here to consider a vote to approve the transfer of three Jalbert Lane.
Can I add one small thing?
Yes.
Sorry, my husband's not stopping. I don't know if I should listen to him or listen to you.
I said yes.
Please go to the microphone.
Go to the microphone. No?
There's millions of people that want to listen to you.
The transparency issue, obviously, it felt very opaque, the whole process of this. But in the sale of this, I think you mentioned something about the Butters, if they had the opportunity to purchase the property. I felt a little soured when I heard that because of my attempted to...
You know, I'd like to hear what you're saying, but if you talk that fast and almost seventy-seven, and my hearing aid is turned off...
I'm sorry. I apologize.
I want to hear you.
I'll slow down. What I was... When you had mentioned about potential sale to the Butters of the property, the Butters were willing to purchase the property for X amount or whatever, I had already done, tried to do that. You know, I had already asked if a property was to be able to be sold and we could purchase it years ago. It was like, it was within the last five years. Because we were coming up, you know, we were at the point where we could do that. And I was told no. I believe the Renards actually asked also...
I want to ask you to be patient. We established the Affordable Housing Trust about that number of years ago. So the town has a new outlook on town-owned land than it had prior. We had no Affordable Housing Trust to be involved with the transfer of land to create affordable housing. And this board voted to establish the trust to create affordable housing in town, and it's a new day.
Okay.
For that purpose.
I don't want to speak for my neighbors on this particular thing, but however, if I was able to potentially take that property ourselves and keep it exactly the way it is, I would... I'm not my bank, I can't guarantee you everything right now. However, I would definitely want to entertain that option. Because I would like to leave it green, natural, exactly the way it is, rather than seeing it leveled, a house built in, and the land brought up, and water running off because it's very, very mucky and very, very clay down in our area. Not a pleasant thing when it gets really wet. Thank you again.
Thank you. Comments from the board, David?
I'll try to go as fast as I can, but I told you not to, so I'll...
She doesn't have a hearing aid.
It's vacant land. I hear neighbors who want it to remain vacant. I want unused vacant land in Danvers to be turned into money to reduce the amount of taxes that everybody pays, even if it's a dollar per house. If that lot is buildable according to zoning, conservation, Board of Health, and all other regulations, it's gonna be built on either by the Affordable Housing Trust or I'm gonna ask, please, Board of Selectmen, let's sell it on the open market so that money can come back into the town treasury. What I hear the Affordable Housing Trust saying is that they've got a hundred and twenty-eight thousand bucks that they're gonna lose if they can't commit it. I'm inclined to say, let them commit it to the Affordable Housing Trust. If they can make it work, then they can pay the hundred and twenty-eight thousand. If they can't make it work, then you're gonna get a real bargain. Because if it can't be buildable, it's gonna be worth a whole lot less, and then maybe the neighbors can buy it. But simply asking that the... I hear about your concern. I have a home too. I've been in it forty-eight years. It's very precious to me. Fortunately, I don't have any water problems right now. You want it to remain vacant. I understand. The way that you can make that happen is to pay fair market value between you people and buy it. And if you're not gonna, and if you can't do that, I say the Affordable Housing Trust should have a shot at it. And then they're gonna find out in the next month or two or three whether or not it's buildable. If it's buildable, they're gonna build a house there. If it's not, they're not gonna pay us, and so I'm gonna look for the money from somebody else to go into the general tax fund. But as far as it just being open space and made open space for the benefit of five wonderful neighbors, I don't think that that's fair to the rest of the town. If you want it open space, you gotta buy it. And if the Affordable Housing Trust is gonna lose a hundred and twenty-eight unless we can commit to that, and then they can go about to see if it's buildable, I'm inclined to, because of the Affordable Housing Trust mission and the people who are on it, and because I respect the gardener and the amount of work he puts into it, that's where I'm at. So I'm gonna make a motion when it comes time for it to approve whatever's on the agenda, and the Affordable Housing Trust knows they've gotta get their act in order, see if it's gonna be buildable, and then pay us the money. And if they don't, it's gonna be a much less valuable piece of land, and it will be available... As far as I'm concerned, it should be sold. I'm not in the business as a town selectman of keeping a ten-thousand-square-foot lot of land down there by the river, open space when it can be turned into money for the town. Sorry, I talked too long. I hope I didn't talk too fast. Thank you for listening.
Phil?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Having been subjected to some recent development contiguous to my house, and I'm on top of a drum mill, not in a low area, I can appreciate the problems with water runoff and development. There's no way that you're gonna put a house on that property with possibly about a thousand feet of impervious surface and not have a runoff problem. I also have a little bit of a background in rototilling gardens in that part of town, and that clay on that side of the river is the most impervious surface we have anywhere. And water does not percolate laterally or vertically in that kind of soil. Water will stay on top of that soil for days after a rainfall before it'll actually eventually either evaporate or disappear somehow. I think it's an unfair impact on the immediate neighbors if that lot is built upon. If it was easy and not impactful, it would have been built upon back when Jalbert Lane was laid out, and it wasn't. They chose not to. So I'm not gonna, I'm not in favor of this at all.
Thank you. Diane?
Well, I agree somewhat with David. Everybody knows I'm cheap. Everybody knows I'm cheap, and the tax dollars on a home are better than tax dollars on land. I'm a little disappointed that I'm sitting here talking to neighbors as an elected official, and I don't have all the facts, and we discussed this a month ago. I don't understand why we don't know if it's buildable. I don't understand why I don't have a wetlands map. I don't understand why the well situation, once you knew that was gonna happen, that we didn't have the information whether that could be done. You're asking me to vote on something in case it can happen. If I ran my business like that, I'd be in trouble. I'm pretty tough. So, I'm really surprised at myself, but I said it, and I know you don't want to hear about Lauren Ave, I asked those neighbors if they wanted to buy it, and they said no.
Mr. Chairman.
And I said, uh, this isn't yours, but I'm sorry.
Just sit down. I just want to clarify, several, several board members have mentioned selling the property directly to the neighbors, and this topic did come up with Lorraine Road. I'm not gonna put David Duluk on the spot, but the opinion then was that there would need to be a public 30B compliant process to do so. So, it could be purchased by anybody, Danvers resident, Salem, New Hampshire resident. That, that piece of it is a little, and if I could just offer a comment, not, I don't mean to lead the board in any particular direction, but what, what Gardner said as the chair of the trust, the differences between the parcel at Lorraine Road and this parcel, where you had public utilities adjacent to the property there, you know, this is a town-owned property, it wouldn't necessarily be prudent for the trust to be spending its money to draw wetlands maps and do engineering work on a property that they didn't own. So, that, I think the, the reason it's a conditional request is because until they have direction from the board, it would be not, it would not be a good use of the trust's resources to be spending dollars on those things. And I think that's an important distinction between the two properties.
Is 30B an auction?
Well, it's, it's a public procurement law, which I, and I'm not a, I can't cite Bible and verse, but I do, we do have an opinion on that.
So, I want the neighbors to know you're almost in a lose-lose situation, because if it's not a buildable lot, then it's not, not buildable. If it is a buildable lot, then either the housing authority or David and I are sending it out to be sold. Because if it is a buildable lot, my job as an elected official is to keep people's tax dollars as low as possible. I do everything here, you can ask our finance director, our town manager, I'm always looking for outside money, or money to come in to reduce taxes. I don't think you're in a win situation. I think if this is a buildable lot, something's gonna be built. If it's not a buildable lot, you're gonna find out in the near future.
It's a win situation for them if it's not buildable.
Right. Well, but I do still feel that I could have had some more information about wetlands and what have you. I just don't feel like I have enough information. I know somebody gave me this map, and I've been struggling trying to read it. You forgot to give me the key, so that doesn't help me. Nope.
It's okay, please.
You're all done. But I'm just, just so you know. But I am looking at this, and I'm really struggling, because affordable housing is something we look at for our 10%, but, and I'm really sorry that you weren't brought into this a little better and a little earlier. I think I've only known about it since May. We have been working on it. We're getting better at this. But I really think if that's a buildable lot, it's gonna be built on.
What's that? Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, how many votes are needed to transfer a town land from this board? Three. Three, thank you. We had a motion that I'm looking at, but it doesn't have a price on it. Is there any edits we want to add to the price?
Mr. Chairman, if I could comment, the, the motion that was distributed to the board with the agendas last week mirrored the motion for the Lorraine Road property. So, if there were going to be a motion tonight, I have a couple of recommendations. I was reviewing with counsel earlier today.
Do you have something I can read?
I've drafted something. I'd be happy to pass it down or read it to you, either way.
Do I get to make comments as a selectman?
You can make comments as a selectman, yes, Gardner.
Thank you.
But no, we, no, no, but don't repeat what you said up there, please.
Oh. So, now, speaking as a selectman, I too am charged with the best utilization of town resources and trying to maximize what we do with our property, balance that with community standards and, and, and what goes on in the neighborhoods. As a selectman, I would only vote to transfer this land contingent on the conformity to all zoning, border health, conservation, and wetlands regulations. That would be a condition that, as a selectman, I would say this, that is the, that is the contingency, that the transfer happened only if all of those things are met. And as the board has indicated, as the D-HAD indicated, they are pursuing a well opportunity and a, and a septic opportunity, they are not going to be forcing town water down in that area. And I would make that a condition as well, of a motion as a selectman. So, as a selectman, what I'm, I, I would put those in there and agree with the comments of the town manager that it would be imprudent to spend town resources and D-HAD money trying to get this information without, ahead of time, without indicating the direction of the board. That as soon as the board makes a direction, and if it's positive, those things will happen. And that's the contingency. If, if any of those fail, if zoning fails, wetlands fails, border health fails, conservation fails, this does not happen. That the transfer does not happen.
We get that.
Okay. Well, I'm saying as a selectman, those are the contingencies I would want on a motion.
Gardner, do you, of the hundred and twenty-eight thousand that is available, do you have to use any of those funds to go to have wetlands and all that done? So, will that be reduced, or do you have other funds?
So, I will speak, the Affordable Housing Committee has made the commitment that that will come out of the Affordable Housing Trust amounts, not out of the housing funds. We can't use that money, we can't use housing funds money for surveys for, it has to be brick and, it has to eventually end up as brick and mortar. So, we can't, so we are committing Affordable Housing Trust money, independent of the housing, of the, of the home funds, to do all of that investigatory work, survey, wetlands discovery, all of the things you would pay for if you were a private developer.
I'll set up here on the board.
And, and are you willing to give any of the money from the trust in addition to the federal money?
That was not voted upon. What, the vote, I can tell you that the vote of the board was the hundred and twenty-eight five. And trust money to cover all of the transfers, discoveries, any work with the courts, land deed work, the Housing Trust was going to give that portion of it.
So, to keep it a legal motion, I'm gonna ask the town manager to read the draft.
Okay. The motion would read, pursuant to the authority under Chapter Forty, Section Seventy-seven B, the Board of Selectmen agree to accept the custody of a parcel known as Three Jelbert Lane from the treasure collector for the purpose, for the purposes of sale to the Danvers Affordable Housing Trust, established and authorized by the 2011 Annual Town Meeting, to purchase, accept, receive, and retain property for an amount equal to the payment of back taxes and legal costs associated with the transfer, and a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars in available home funds, in order that, in order for DH, in order for the Housing Trust to establish affordable housing upon this parcel in accordance with Housing Trust rules and regulations. Said acceptance and sale are both subject to issuance of a building permit to the Housing Trust or their sign. In the event that no building permit is issued for the subject property, the Housing Trust or their sign shall be solely responsible for any costs incurred in the pursuit thereof.
I assume.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Second discussion. All those in favor of the motion as read?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No?
No.
So, it's three to two, it passes.
I don't know. It's white. Yeah, there's no way.
Turn it on.
Yep. I know. Tell me.
Dave, thanks for sticking up.
Thank you, David. The board will hear an update by land use and community service staff, services staff, on the demographic trends, growth, and development opportunities, and the, and the current C-1 and C-1A rezoning effort. I think that would be Mr. Aaron Henry.
It might just take me one second here to, oh, okay, all right. That's okay, 'cause this could take a second. I did this at 5:30, and everything fired up just great.
Single person. A couple of minutes. Well, earlier you said something about single mothers.
Go.
Go ahead. Good evening, everybody. Thank you, and thank you for hanging in there. I will try to speed through this as, as quickly as I can. Thinking of the end, really what I'm trying to share here, we've come before you over the last year, once or twice, with snippets of information regarding some of the demographic change that our staff has been identifying as relevant to thinking about where we want to go in the future with growth and development. Tonight, like I said, I think we showed you some slides in the fall as part of the budget. We came back probably two or three months ago, and some of these numbers may look familiar to you. This week, we're really kind of starting to dive in. There's another cut coming where these, each topic will be in its own report. That'll probably take us another nine to twelve months to produce, but I thought tonight was a good time to kind of provide you an update of where we're at. We have an, you know, somewhat of a finished product here. So, hopefully, what we can do is have a little bit of a review and a discussion of some of the demographic changes that we've been seeing in town, and some of the things that aren't changing. It's important to understand where we're, where we're staying the same, or how we're staying the same. But I'd also like to pivot at the end of this to kind of talk about how these trends may or may not affect how we want to calibrate local zoning efforts going forward, and that's the tie into the C-1A and the downtown corridor work that we've been doing. Usually, when we talk about change, most people on the street will immediately jump to new units. That's one of the most obvious ways a community can change, is that you had ten thousand units, and now you have fifteen thousand units, and all of these new units have brought new people, new characteristics, and changed the character of the town. We hear that a lot. This is going to change the character of the town. Obviously, the next way a community can change is you can have more births, you can have more deaths, and that kind of changes the population. The final two on this slide, socioeconomic changes and housing unit turnover, are what we feel is driving change in Danvers, because we're not growing appreciably, and we'll touch more about that as we go forward. We're not really seeing a lot of new births. We're, we have more deaths every year than births. So, how are we, how is our population increasing? It's increasing through housing turnover, and existing change within the housing stock itself. So, I'm not gonna spend a ton of time trying to detail every single thing on these slides. I provided this to you in your packet. One key to this that I probably should have explained in the packet, and I apologize, is the difference between the solid arrows and the hollow arrows. The solid arrows, well, the arrow indicates a trend, either it's going up or it's going down. Or it's staying flat, and a few occasions in the slides, you'll see a static arrow. If it's solid, it means the change that, from the prior estimate, is statistically significant, meaning there is something definitely going on. There's gonna always be natural variation when you survey a population. So, sometimes your population will go up, but it doesn't, it's not statistically significant. It's just, this time you took the survey, you happened to catch a couple more people than the last time you took the survey. But when the arrow is solid, it means there is a change occurring that's probably a meaningful change. So, on this slide, I think what I would highlight here is that both our population and households are increasing, but the population in Danvers is increasing significantly, although the number of households is only ticking up, and it's not significant. And what I think this indicates to us is that you're seeing houses with empty nesters being replaced by housing with more, more members of the household, probably children. So, again, that's kind of how you might see population going up, but the number of housing units in the community not really changing.
So, can I ask a couple of clarifying questions? Because I read the slide and tried to figure out, this is current state, or as current state as we can get.
Correct.
That is, the population is twenty-seven thousand, not it's increased twenty-seven thousand. The units is ten thousand, it's not that it's increased ten thousand.
Absolutely.
That it is increasing, but that the, the 2017 census, or whatever the baseline for this, because reading the legend at the bottom says 2013 through 2017.
Yep.
I'm presuming that that's the baseline, is 2017, and is the, so let's start with household, households.
Yep.
Ten thousand six hundred and twenty-four. Is that the number reported in 2017, from which we see an increase now?
So, in 2013, that number was ten thousand four hundred.
Okay.
Some, I don't remember off the top of my head.
No, no, but, so what does, so what does this number represent, twenty, the 2017 number?
Yes.
Or, or projections post-2017?
No, this is as of-
2017, okay. It's slightly increased between 2013 and 2017.
Yep.
It wasn't statistically significant because it's not solid.
Correct.
Okay. And as of 2017, it's ten, ten thousand six hundred and twenty-four. Thank you.
As we see, household size in Danvers is generally consistent with state and trends, but it's just not as pronounced. So, again, you'll see that, you know, our, it is moving up closer to these averages, but not like the jumps that we're seeing at national or state level. One thing I want to point out here is when you split out homeownership versus rental home, rental owner, rental occupant, occupancy, we see a dramatic drop in the number of occupants in rental households. And again, I kind of want to asterisk this as, when we talk about growth and development going forward, what do we want to do? And I just came from a community that was really struggling with a number that was continued to move up on this. And so, I just want to highlight, like, when we talk about what we need to build going forward, I would suggest that, that that number is a meaningful one, and something we should keep in mind. So, when it comes to age, everyone's saying the silver tsunami, that's a phrase I hear a lot. People on the streets say, well, there's a silver tsunami coming. And as you can see, Danvers is considerably older than both the state and the nation. Not really a surprise, given that, you know, you're generally moving here when you have a mature household, looking to raise a family. So, we're not particularly surprised by that, but it is, it is a big jump. While the local trends within the age brackets are fairly consistent with these larger macro forces, there are, there's one here that I really want to point out, which is the thirty-five to forty-four-year-olds. My colleague, Mr. Fields, doesn't like this number. He's convinced that there's something wrong with it, as we're seeing a dramatic loss over the last, you know, five to seven years in this category. My guess is, is that what's happening is that they're sliding into the upper bracket. They may have moved here at thirty-eight, thirty-nine, and they've slid in to this, because, again, what I see on the street, I would have told you that this bracket here is ballooning, and we're losing probably this bracket. And what we see here is that we have an increase in twenty, the twenty-five to thirty-four-year-olds, and a reversing of the thirty-five. So, again, what did Mr. Churchill say about statistics and numbers? But again, it's just what we're showing right now with trends.
Aaron, why are you excluding Mr. Mills and myself here?
We just-
We don't exist, is that right?
No, you, you guys are growing.
I'm missing company.
No, 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 that's, that's behind us.
I think there's no sixties.
And what we see here is that we have an increase in 20, the 25 to 34-year-olds, and a reversing of the 35. So, again, what did Mr. Churchill say about statistics and numbers? But again, it's just what we're showing right now with trends.
Aaron, why are you excluding Mr. Mills and myself here? We don't exist, is that right?
No, you guys are growing.
I'm missing a point.
No, no, that's, that's behind us. I mean...
I think there's no 60s.
You know, 55 to 64.
You already got 60% of the people, where's the other 40%?
You're missing a whole age group.
You don't want another realities of the downward trend, though.
You're missing the entire professional population.
In the full report, I will make sure we cover every age bracket. I was trying to be concise and got it down to 20 slides, but...
Could be the same slide, you're just telling me you're going to have more age groups there.
I don't exist, I'm not paying my taxes.
Interesting, and again, I know when we talk about school enrollment, this'll, this'll come up again, but interesting that households with someone in it under 18 is actually declining, not significantly in Danvers, but it is moving down. And as you see, we're more or less in line with state and national, national averages. But again, households with someone greater than 65, we're seeing significantly, significant increase in that, and we're also significantly higher than state and national averages. And again, thinking down the road, that very well could have service implications for the town when it comes to budget and things we need to account for as our population continues to age. So, looking a little bit at households and household income, really, what this slide doesn't capture, because here you might see some downward trends, which again, I'm a little surprised about, and I think I have some understanding of why that could be happening. But I think what I would point out here is that, and we've talked about this at prior meetings, the top end of Danvers, when you break it down into income quintiles, which we often do, the top quintile is doing very well, and those incomes continue to rise. So, the top 20% of the community is doing just fine. What we're seeing on average, or median, is coming down, still very good, good numbers, nothing to be afraid of. But it's just interesting that while the state is coming up, we're coming down. So, maybe we're going to kind of find a happy medium there, but it is an interesting trend to show. The one thing I would also point out is the poverty level. Again, this makes some sense, and that poverty level is just a line in the sand drawn by the federal government, based on the number of household occupants. If you have an older population on fixed incomes, you may be quite happy, you may not have a mortgage payment, you may have a good retirement, but because you're on fixed income, you technically fall below the poverty line. So, in and of itself, that's not a problem. There's a further breakout of this, and it's, by and large, the majority of these folks are over 65. So, I think that's explainable, but again, it could have service implications if we were to not pay attention to how this trend goes in the future.
And Aaron, I'm always going to disagree with your median income.
With, in that what?
I just don't, I can't wait for the next five years, because that's so far off.
Okay, good.
Higher, low?
Low.
That's low.
Yeah. And again, I think with the incoming population, and there's some cuts of this data that you can do, that I'm not presenting tonight, where you can segregate out newer residents that have been here less than five years and what they're making. And again, when you make those cuts, you see a very different story. And again, that has service implications for us as well. So, when it comes to education attainment and some of broad social categories, the school enrollment number here is not the same one that we're reporting to the state. This is kind of an aggregate, so this could be the kids going to St. Mary's, the kids going to the prep, all of that. But the decrease in the numbers overall, it's kind of, it's interesting. So, I made the cut to point out that grades one through eight, we are seeing an increase, and we are significantly higher than state and national averages. So, again, that kind of, to me, makes sense with what we're seeing at the local level and what I know of the community myself. Our adult population, very well educated, and getting more so, especially at the graduate and PhD level. And again, that kind of jives with what I've seen in housing stock turnover, just in the town, you know, being on the sports fields and meeting new neighbors and all of that. So, this doesn't shock me, and it's also another indicator of wealth and the wealth metrics of the folks moving in. And again, I think this change is being driven, because again, we'll touch on it in a moment, we're really not growing when it comes to new units. So, how are these numbers changing? It's existing housing stock turnover. The residents you have today have a very different profile than the residents we had 10 years ago, 20 years ago. So, and I didn't have a great slide to park it on, but I thought this one was the one. Just want to point out that we are losing a number, our number of veterans here in town. When it comes to residents reporting a disability, we see an increase in that. Again, with an aging population, that's not a surprise. And when you cut this further, you would see that the largest percentage, the largest category in this is those over 65. Race and ethnicity, we've never been more diverse than we are today. We are still incredibly homogeneous. Not a lot to say there. Moving on. And we'll get to a little bit more in depth on this in a moment, but we're really not adding to the housing stock in a significant way, and I think this to Mr. Barrett's, sorry, Mr. Trask's point earlier, I'm not showing you where we were at, but we've grown by, I think I want to say it's about 1 point something percent a year. We're really adding single digits. Now, there's a few, once in a while, you'll see a big project come in, like the state hospital, and there's a slide I show later that, you know, I can account for, for the state hospital coming online. But by and large, our permitting pipeline is, you know, if we do 25 units a year, it was a good year, it really doesn't, it's not what's driving this change. Consistent with broader forces, we're seeing units built in the post-war period going away. We're also seeing units in the 70s going away, and there's big building boom in this region in the 70s. There was a big building boom in the post-war, so again, writ large, looking across the region. I'm not surprised by those. Those are housing stocks that were largely thrown up, and they've, they're due for a refreshment, and you're seeing a lot of reinvestment in the community. I know Woodvale, it's like, you know, it's amazing, the turnover that we're seeing over there. Want to point out, again, thinking forward, when we see new construction, the census tracks one-room houses, two-room houses, these aren't bedrooms, these are just overall rooms in the structure. What jumped out here was for Danvers, statistically significant change is that our homes now have nine rooms or more, more often than not. So, they're buying a post-war something, totally redoing it, and it's coming out on the backside, much larger than it was beforehand. Interestingly, we're losing the two bedrooms. And those are often what we've been hearing about, at least on my time on the planning board, and some of the outreach events we've done around growth and development in town. What are we hearing about? We got no place for my kid to move back to, no place for my parents to move to. What's happening? Well, those units are getting gobbled up and recycled, and, and we're losing that, you know, two-bedroom, two-bathroom opportunity. So, again, thinking forward about where we want to go, and this is all subject to refinement as we go through the process, I would suggest that we really clue in on producing units in this band. That's where we're missing right now, and we're losing them.
Aaron, why...
Yep.
You started.
Why are you missing, not even reporting, the largest amount of structures in town? We doubled our population in this town between 1950 and 1970, yet you're not even including those structures in this, on this slide at all.
I have that information, I'm happy to share it with you. What I was trying to point out here was where Danvers was either in line with national and state trends, or running opposite of those. So, in, in our particular context, I thought that pointing out these two bands, I have that information, I'm happy to share that with you. Again, I was trying to trim it down to what, what are the takeaways from this, but I have that.
Because I think it's very important that much of that housing that was built in that time period tended to be five-room ranches or four-room capes, and then they were somewhat expanded. But a lot of those are still our most affordable housing stock in town. And I, I use an example over in Orchard Village, where you've got a whole neighborhood, which there's almost never a house for sale over there. Also, they haven't blown out those houses over in Orchard Village, the other side of Farley Hill, like Mr. Drive, et cetera, like they have in Woodvale or other places, because lots are relatively small, but they seem to be the most affordable houses that kids and families are staying in. It's, they're not being sold. I go around town, you see all kinds of for-sale signs. You go over that neighborhood, there's no for-sale signs. So, these trends, I think, are, are very important, that we had, we had a lot of housing stock that was relatively cheap, and it could be the gateway to getting more affordable housing, in trying to use or emphasize these smaller ranches and capes that we still may have in town, scattered.
And I think as we, we'll talk about, not, maybe not in depth tonight, but I think, to your point, I think what we're also going to see is the regional housing market is going to continue to heat. I mean, I don't believe we're going to see much of an adjustment in 2020, as some of the economists are predicting. So, I think what you're going to see is some of those neighborhoods that were off the radar will start coming on the radar. Only time will tell, but my guess is, like, you know, kind of like the conversation with the lot, once it's been built, it, it's only a matter of time, and if we don't intervene, you know, my guess is in five years or so, we'll start seeing some of these neighborhoods that have not had a lot of activity start becoming hot. So, on this one, I just wanted to point out, again, kind of, when we build new, we're building big, and it's coming at the expense of a decrease in the two-bedroom units that we're hearing a lot from the community. And I think, and I'll touch on this again later, really, the question comes down to, what market are we building for? Are we building for existing residents and what they're looking for? Are we just going to continue to do what the regional market wants to do? Because, again, we can do that all day long and do it successfully, but, you know, I think what, what we're proposing is maybe trying to nuance that a little bit.
So, when you say, what market are we building for? This is always a point of contention with me, when I see social media and says, why is the town of Danvers letting all this growth happen, or all these, you know, lots being built with huge... This is property rights and zoning. So, unless we're going to talk about the fact that zoning should encourage things, the reality is, if I, if I'm a private citizen that owns a piece of property, that can support a nine-bedroom, a nine-room house on my property, with, through zoning, the town doesn't encourage or discourage that. The town has no say on what I do as a private citizen with my property outside of zoning. And so, I think that one of the things we're going to get to eventually, and I'm hoping that's the case, is, you're right, if we want to encourage more two-bedroom growth, then we have to look at opportunities that we haven't before, including the rezoning downtown to allow for mixed use. That itself, by nature, will encourage two-bedrooms, one- or two-bedroom units, because that's the capacity that piece of property can hold. But outside of that, our one is our one, and if I, if, you know, if I get proper approval, I can build a massive, massive house on the corner of School Street. And, you know, that's, that's the property owner's right. So, the town doesn't encourage or discourage, except through zoning.
That's a pretty powerful tool, though.
It is, if that's what, if that's what the direction is, but, you know, the town doesn't say, as a property owner, what you can and cannot do other than zoning. And some people are going to decide, I'm going to max this, this building based on zoning, because I'm maximizing the fact that I'm going to sell this in 10 years and make, I want to make my profit.
And that's a little bit what I experienced in the last stop on my career, where unfortunately, single-family detached homes were no longer paying for themselves. That mean that the houses, it, it, it just, we were just chasing our tail. And it was no longer working, and it wasn't making ends meet. I think we did an analysis, and probably like, in that community in 2016, it was something like the house had to be assessed for over $2.3 million to pay for itself. And so, again, I think to your point, that market's coming up here, whether you want to like it or not, but we're not building enough in eastern Massachusetts to stop the demand curve from continuing to push prices astronomically high. And at some point, we've got to look at what product we're allowing to happen in our community, and if that's, there's a way to do that the right way, and there's a way to just kind of let it continue to go laissez-faire, and it'll happen to us whether, you know, anyway. I don't want to go on a diatribe about, about that. We'll touch more on that in this conversation, I think, we'll continue over the next year. So, let me get back to some of the economic changes that we've seen in our population over the last five to seven years. Because we have easy access to the region, we're connected to everything, it doesn't surprise me that our unemployment rate is even lower than the state's rate, which is historically low, and very, very good while looking across the nation. And while we're thinking, and most economists are predicting a downturn in the next year or so, there are still no signs of it when you look at the employment numbers. Everyone's saying that's going to flatline and maybe tick back up, but in the builders that we're talking to, the businesses that we've been talking to over the last year, everyone's cautious, but everybody is moving forward with their plans. No one's pulling up yet, and that's a really good sign, because that's usually, you know, they need 18 months usually for some sort of guesswork, and so they're continuing to move. So, I don't see an end in sight at the moment. I do want to highlight here the decreasing number of females in the workforce. This is, again, usually an indicator of well-being when it comes to economics, because for better or for worse, when households get comfortable, you tend to see the woman in the household come out of the workforce. So, again, we've seen a dramatic decrease. Again, we have 60% of our females are working today. That is down significantly. And again, to me, that's an indicator of the households coming in, and where they stand on the income scale, and what they need to do to make ends meet. And so, I think it's interesting that, it's a, it's a good sign, in a way. I understand there's a negative to that, but it is generally seen as, as a positive indicator of economic health. I also want to highlight, when it comes to commuting, because we are so connected to the region, we tend to drive to work alone. And so, you'll see that we are very high compared to our state, and that doesn't surprise me, we're connected by surface roads. It's highways that connects us to everything, and we don't have good public transit connections. So, again, that's not a huge surprise, and also, as we all know, it's congested in eastern Massachusetts, and our drive times to work are going up. Real quick, I'll...
Aaron, that mean travel time, is that minutes per...
Yes, minutes, I'm sorry. That's minutes.
Thank you.
There was a report not that long ago, the Boston region actually leads the nation in what's called supercommuting. So, fortunately, we don't seem to have too much of that happening here in Danvers, but that's, when your commute takes longer than an hour, you are considered a supercommuter, and the Boston region leads the nation in supercommuters. And again, that's a function of the lack of attainable housing. So, now you have to live in lemon stir to commute into Children's Hospital if you're just a nurse. And so, we're seeing these huge drive times. I'm just pulling that out of my hat.
And wouldn't that also have to do with available road space, the lack of...
Yeah.
Public transportation?
Transit, yep.
In other words...
Right.
Yeah, it's not only, no, okay, but I see a lack of road space for the number of cars.
Right.
And...
And that speaks to a little bit, in the region, there's really a mismatch, a spatial mismatch, between where the jobs are and where the homes are. There was a report not that long ago, I think we've added 300,000 jobs in the Boston region in the last, I can't remember what it was, maybe five years, don't quote me on that. In that time, we've only added 30,000 housing starts. Where, where are the workers coming from if we're adding all of those jobs? They're pouring into the region from beyond the region, clogging up our roadway. So, the state is well aware of the transportation problem and the, and the drag on economic growth that it presents to the region, and the T's grappling with it almost every day. And we have to continue to do what we can do, again, to better match homes to jobs. And as we go down the road in this conversation, we'll talk to you more about, we actually, and it was shocking to me, Boston sends more workers to Danvers than Danvers sends to Boston. And that's just not what I thought was happening. We actually have a little bit of a microeconomy here with Boston, Salem, Beverly, and Danvers. And we're really holding on to ourselves, to the point that the federal government calls us a micro MSA within the Boston region, and we're one of the few that has that within the Boston MSA. And that's really a good thing, and we should be trying to think strategically about how to leverage that going far, going forward. One thing real quick here, while I brought up that we have less women in the workforce today than we did five years ago, interesting that we're seeing that if you have children in the home, both parents or all parents for single-family households, almost every parent is working. 82% of parents with children under six are working. Both parents, if you have a child between six and 17, 81% of our households are working. So, again, what I think is happening is there's a cutoff where you have the, the middle class of the community working hard, doing better, but not doing as well as that top tier. That top tier is moving in, significantly higher metrics. That top tier is moving in significantly higher metrics with a different profile. And again, I think that has ramifications for us going forward as we want to talk about calibrating where we go from here. When it comes to the economy, what are they doing? So they tend to have sales and office jobs, managerial jobs in these four industries. Interesting to note, retail nationally state is declining. We have, we're going up. Not significantly, but we are trending upward. Now, that doesn't mean the Liberty Liberty Tree Mall has more jobs today than it did five years ago. It means that our population in the workforce is working more retail than it did five years ago. And it's, as this shows, this is our second highest industry sector. So again, that could be a function of an aging population that's working part-time at Home Depot or somewhere, you know, at a store in Salem, then they're being reported as working in retail. So needed to learn more about this, but I thought that that was really critical to share with what our top industries are according to the Census Bureau. So switching gears a little bit, that's kind of what's happening within the population that we have. I think then we want to pivot to, well, what about growth and development? What about new unit production? What's happening? This is a countywide map of the United States. Red are areas that are losing population, blue are areas that are gaining. As you'll see here, the nation on the whole is just moving up very slightly. And if it weren't for in migration from outside of the United States, we would be losing population. In the northeast, you see we're barely blue. We're in this like 0 to 1% growth range. We're really not growing very well in this region. Well, particularly the Boston region, we're we're growing weekly, not weekly by the week, meaning not strongly. And I think this is important to keep in mind because I, and again, my job is what it is, so people are always talking to me about all the growth and development that we are doing, and we're going crazy. And I try to be polite about it, but we're not growing. We're really not. One and a half percent growth isn't really growth. We're just kind of keeping up with things. And I think we need to reframe this conversation a little bit. Now, I'm not saying growth is bad. I'm just saying I think when people see this project or that project, they associate a lot of change that they're seeing and feeling in the community, and they're sticking it on some of those projects when in reality, as I hope I've shown, it's probably coming out of your existing 9,000 housing units that are already here and the changes that are occurring within those occupants. So for a little context now, a little bit closer to home, we'll see that our population growth has grown by about 2.8% over the last, since the year 2000. We're growing by about 100 people a year. This is not housing unit growth, this is population change. And again, that's right in line with the region. But again, doesn't have anything to do with the number of units we're putting in. And in fact, we're seeing some change in that as we talked about where household size is changing. So the most of the change in the population numbers are coming through the changes in household size. So to switch to the housing stock turnover itself, and this is just to drive this point home, this is all sales of units in Danvers since 1987. You see, we had a little, a really high peak there coming out of, I think this was called the Massachusetts Miracle. I don't want to date myself, but I don't want to tell you what I was doing in 1987, but I think that that's what that was. But on average, we're going to sell around 450 units a year, every year. It doesn't take long for that number of sales to add up to, wow, suddenly you have, in in this year, according to the census in 2017, 17% of your population has moved here since the year 2010. And we're down to only 16% of the population was here in 1979. This is, and I and I think, and I wish, I know this is a very busy chart, it's hard to understand, but some of these high watermarks, like you'll see 42% of the population in, I think this was 2000, sorry, I'm doing that, in 2012, 42% of the population had moved here between 2000 and 2009. That bar is decayed already, down to 33%. So we may never, we don't know what this is, what, how high this is going to go, but if you look at some of these other columns, and this is again, something we're seeing in other high value communities where we have a lot of wealth, we're seeing people treating the home more and more like a commodity, and it's a purchase that they're making with some calculation as to how long they're going to be there, what are they getting for that purchase, and then ultimately, is this an asset that I'm going to be able to get rid of at the end of that time? So we're seeing in general more transient populations even among the older, mature households. And we'll talk more about that, and we can see that in some of the numbers where, you know, maybe this wasn't where I bought my first home, but it's where I'm buying the second home. And then when I'm done with that, I'm probably going to move back to some other place where find a unit that's more my style. So again, it's a complicated chart, but just trying to show you some some dramatic trends that I think are occurring. This is that same general statistic snapshot since 2010 by block group. This is a census geography and how much turnover we've seen in each of our block groups since 2010. This one being the area of town out beyond Route 1 with the most change, almost 50% of this census block has changed since 2010. My guess is that's the State Hospital project and a couple of the 40Bs out there that have brought in a massive amount of new people. But again, in general, you'll see even through the center of town, you know, my own neighborhood, 36% center of town is bouncing right between 35 and 40%. Interesting that this neighborhood here is pretty solid at 8.8%. So to Mr. Clark's point, we do see neighborhoods where there's very low turnover, the census block containing Orchard.
Yeah.
You called it Orchard Village?
Orchard Village.
14% turnover. So again, there are neighborhoods holding on. This map I also kind of included just for a little bit of context, so you can see what's happening around us as well. And again, not exceptional in this turnover. This is happening everywhere in eastern Massachusetts and but I thought this was also another way to drive that home. Okay. So I I kept this one out of your slideshow so that we could have a quick laugh. There you go. Thank you. So again, thinking about where do we go from here? Why do we keep coming at you every couple of months and giving you a bunch of numbers and then walking away? And then coming back with more numbers? So really, what this is about is what are we doing going forward? And what what do these numbers tell us and inform us about the decisions we need to make going forward? I would argue, and again, this is going to be discussed ad nauseam over the next 12 to 18 months, that we should probably increase choices for couples, whether you're, you know, the starter households. Yes, sir.
I've been a single person for 76 years. Why is it couples and not couples and single people?
I will change that for the next slide.
I just ask.
Well, in general, it's because we're hearing about starter households wanting to come in. So what, why are we, we don't have?
I always wanted to be a couple, but it just didn't work out that way.
I think what we're hearing from the ground and what we see in the in the age bracket that I only included an excerpt of all of the brackets, that I think there's a band that's like 18 to 35s. Those have dramatically fallen off if you look over the last 20 to 30 years, and those are the the ones that we're hearing from. Certain households saying, well, my kid would like to move back, but there's no housing options. And, you know, he's got a girlfriend, he lives in Somerville, and he'd love to come back to town, but can't get there because there's not an appropriate housing stock for that type of household. So kind of picking on couples, and same at the other end with empty nesters. Again, I think Danvers as a community is probably always going to be a family-oriented place. I don't know that we want to be a swinging hotspot for singles in downtown. We want a more vibrant downtown, but I'm not sure we're looking for the raging 20s. But I could be wrong, and that's something we can flesh out. So I'm choosing to call it couples, but we definitely will take that under advisement going forward. I think we want to try to use the red-hot residential market that exists in eastern Massachusetts, leverage that to strengthen your downtown or other goals that you may have. But in particular, use it to advance other goals. You know, it's just like anything else. The more we can, the more boxes we can check off with one action, the better. And I think you you have an opportunity to use the the desire of the development community to do residential at all costs to your advantage. But we also do want to address affordability. That's something I think on my time on the planning board and in conversations as staff over the last year, I hear a lot about. That said, we have met our obligation under the law regarding the 80% median income. We want to stay there. Certainly, that's going to be a moving target forever for us, and we have to maintain our focus on that. But we also want to talk about market rate affordable and and what does it mean? Can I, can I just buy a unit for, you know, in my neighborhood for $400,000? You know, that sort of affordability and what we we call that attainability, it's lowercase a, if you call it affordable, people get confused. So we'll call that sort of housing attainable housing. Sometimes at the state, you'll hear it called workforce housing. I'm not sure that the man on the street understands workforce housing. I think that they think that that's something different. So I like the term attainable. And I think also, we want to highlight the environment, and that came up tonight with talking about, well, is it wet? Is it buildable? Do we know? Do we not know? Mr. Clark, I think, made the point, if it hasn't been built on today, there was a reason it wasn't built on then. And I like to say it's either on the side of a hill or it's in a wetland. Unfortunately, oftentimes, both. And so I think we want to talk about, does our zoning really reflect that? Or what are we incentivizing? So here's a picture of today's zoning map. Mr. Fields and I have done a very back-of-the-envelope build-out analysis. You have at least 500 units left to be built in town under your current zoning. I actually think it's higher than that, and we will get to that as we have time in the next 12 to 18 months. Our our build-out analysis simply looked at lots larger than the minimum in the zoning district. So if you click over twice that, you you got a hit here. What we're seeing in the business is assemblage, and most build-out analyses don't count or don't factor in assemblage where, well, if I buy this one, this one, and this one, that three units turns into five. And that's what we're seeing right now at the Beaver Brook subdivision that many of you saw at town meeting when they tried to purchase a piece of town-owned land within that development. I mean, he assembled eight or nine pieces of land to get that going. Traditional build-out analysis don't capture that that sort of process, and that is what's happening right now. We're going to get to that, but back of the envelope, we see about 500 units yet to come. The two red circles, very vague here on the map of where we're going to see those units happen. These units are probably going to occur out in Res 3. That said, there's plenty of opportunity everywhere else. There were, there were hits everywhere else. But I want to point out that most of those are going to happen out in the hinterlands where we're going to have to extend water and sewer services to these homes. They're all single-family detached. We already have 9,000 plus of those. We have less than 1,000 of anything else. And again, this is where I was trying to hint earlier where, what do we want to build going forward? I'm not hearing anybody ask me for a nine-bedroom, nine-room, five-bedroom, three-car, I mean, you do have those people coming in. But for the most part, when I'm on the street, I'm I'm hearing about an affordable opportunity closer to town. We don't really incentivize that. This is to Mr. Trask's point earlier. This is what we are asking for. This is what we want the market to build, and it will build it because eastern Massachusetts doesn't have enough housing units to go around. So this is what we're going to get. What could we do? This map, there's a new color that showed up. If you do a before and after, you'll see I've added green. This is all land owned by a government entity or a civic organization that has protection under the zoning act to do whatever they want to do outside of local zoning regardless of what we say. I don't think that this is necessarily where we end up on for green on this map, but I think it important to note that under this zoning scheme, not a single square foot of land is open space. You have, you are telling the world, develop it all. Again, we own a third of it, so that can't happen. When are we going to have the conversation about what do we really want this map to look like when we reach build-out? So again, this has to be fine-tuned, but I'm just pointing out that you don't have any open space on your map. You don't need, and that's not a community, that's not the community I see every day. We talk about our open space, our schools, our fields, all the time, not reflected in what we want to see built in this town on the map. So why is the downtown corridor project so important? Why not focus on putting units on the board that we want to see, that we're hearing our residents and our neighbors talk to us about? Downtown walkable, smaller, more affordable. We can do that without changing the number, right? We just move the units elsewhere. And again, this spoke to Mr. Trask's point earlier. We have given these properties rights. We have to talk about that. We have thoughts on how to address that. But again, we have to really think smartly about what we want to do going forward and achieving the goals that I think we're hearing through the through the community. So, made it. 10:35.
Thank you. Professional.
Professor Henry, very good.
Sorry, I didn't know it's late.
Time for a cold one.
I think just to echo what what Gardner said earlier, I, you know, the, there are opportunities, and I think Aaron and David and his staff are looking at-
What staff?
The data, well, the staff that's growing by the month as we fill these vacancies. We weren't anticipating Susan leaving, but we're working on it. There are opportunities, and I think that the data tells a story and the zoning map tells a story and what what has been sort of anecdotally discussed and experienced. Do we, you know, I don't know if it was Rich made the comment during one of these projects in the last two or three years, you know, they they don't call it planning for nothing. You know, if we sit back and do nothing, change will come, and it will come wherever it's most convenient for the person trying to initiate the change as opposed to having a community conversation about where we'd like to see that change and how we'd like to direct that change. And I think, you know, as he mentioned, this is, this deck represents a lot of work behind the scenes to get a handle on what's actually happening in the community, and that can help influence and support, you know, conversation and dialogue moving forward about what what people want. So I would say, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, that was 46 minutes. That was probably forty too long.
I do.
But I really do appreciate it. And again, we'll be doing more, we're going to be breaking this out into more depth. We can make cuts if you have specific interests that you want us to bear down on. We probably already have it. And again, we really want to produce this information to, so that you, our policy decision-makers, have information. Anecdotal evidence is important, but I don't, you know, suggest you make major decisions based on that, and we want to try to give you as much information as we can.
I I think at some point, I'd like you to expand on this slide and what you're thinking about, because I'm not an expert on all this. So what you mean by this isn't open, open space isn't on the map, this is what we have to do. And I think, I think you should expand on that at some point and explain that to me.
Yep.
Okay.
Happy to do so.
Yeah.
Happy to do so.
I think that's necessary.
So again, just real quick on the C1, C1A, Thursday night, we're, we're having a meeting talking about the downtown zoning change with the business owners in the district. So everyone from Lyons Ambulance down. So we're having one more, and then we're going to pause for the summer because we know it's not a good time to do community outreach, and then we'll we'll hit it hard in the fall with community outreach in general. And we'll be doing a lot of homework behind the scenes on the on the downtown corridor over the summer. So any questions, happy to take them. You know where to find us. Thank you.
We have our real trail made.
Want to kill the projector?
I'm sorry, Thursday night, 7 o'clock here?
6:30 here.
I don't think we got new.
Six or 6:30, I can't remember. 6:30. Yeah, it's not a, it wasn't a posted planning board meeting. It was staff outreach to building, to business owners.
Are we, so it's not a public?
It's public, I'm saying, but it's not a planning board meeting or it's not a whatever, which we're just, we just did outreach and it'll be staff-led.
Okay, number 13. The board will continue discussion and consider a vote to adopt the financial policy guidelines, Mr. Town Manager? the financial policy guidelines, Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's awfully hard to follow that show with a black and white printed policy guideline document, but we did, you know, walk through this at a high level at the last meeting when we distributed it, and indicated that we'd be happy to take any questions in between the two meetings, with the hope that we could adopt this document for use during our dialogue this summer with S&amp;P when we, when we look to renew and hopefully improve our bond rating.
Thank you. Diane, any questions?
Nope.
Comments? Go ahead now.
No, just, I didn't get to you with a couple of things just to consider, and you decided not to. On page three, to regularly evaluate the time financial, the town's financial capacity, should we change regularly to annually? I mean, I'm just thinking that regularly is kind of...
We could probably say at least annually, because I think we, we often do review, you know, we have the annual audit, but periodically throughout the year, we're, we're...
It doesn't commit you to only annually, but I'm thinking that regularly doesn't have any real timeframe around it. My regularly and your regularly are different.
There's another one.
Other than that, minor, minor tweaks. And then one thing, this is not for change here, but we do have a, on page 11, we talk about grant management guidelines. I, I would like to ask you, Mr. Chairman, to have Tom Mancher look at the opportunity for a full-time staff member, or part-time, some sort of staff member, who specializes in grant administration and writing. That is to say, I, I was impressed with the, the city of Beverly has a person who is self-funded through the grants that they get, but as we know, most of these grants, 80, 68% of the language is the same. They want to know about the town's demographics, they want to know about different makeup and opportunities, they want to know about growth. And the remaining 20 to 30% is really specific to the fire truck grant you're trying to get, or the school grant you're trying to get. Most of it is similar and distinct, and why should we not consolidate that work and keep it current as trends go on? Because just, you might take some information out of this demographics information and say, oh, we anticipate growth at 2.3%. Well, if 10 different grant writers in different, 10 different departments have to seek that information out, it would be nice to have that 70 to 80% centralized, organized, and easily, you know, accessible. So I, I'd like to ask that you might think about a specific role for grant administration and writing like they have in Beverly. I think it's, it would be well worth it. And that person also pursues, not just isn't, isn't responding to, but is actively seeking and looking for grant opportunities that may not be readily apparent to various departments. That's all I have.
Okay. Bill?
No questions. I think it's going to be a good guideline for the future, and it'll certainly expedite someone's learning of the system without having to serve for 20 or 30 years in various boards in town to learn slowly.
All right. What's the will of the board?
We accept the financial policy guidelines, guidelines as presented.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose? None? Thank you.
Rodney, thank you for staying so long. I think you learned, you learned a lot tonight.
Look at my camera. I just need to prove to my wife that I was here the past four hours.
Rodney left at 7:12. What are you talking about?
All right. The Town Manager will report to the Board on various items of interest.
I'll keep it brief. That's good. Just a quick note, we'll have a press release going out probably within the next few days reminding residents of the importance and need to put non-contaminated recycling out of the curbside. Recycling is, whether we like it or not, going to be a big issue moving forward. We just learned within the last week or so that Boston is now going to be paying $117 tip fee for its recycling. Other towns and cities are facing tip fees. Our, you know, Jaren would like to renegotiate our contract two years ago on our recycling. We're, we're, we're in a good place through 2023, but they're becoming, they're starting to crack down in a way that they probably haven't for a while in terms of how they're handling their recycling, because they're finding it harder and harder to find landing places for that. So that, what, that's likely to mean, and what the press release we'll, we'll talk a little bit about, is that we're going to have to start doing a better job of cleaning our recycling before we put it out on the curb. We may find that in a cycle or two, instead of having an empty recycling bin, you have a note indicating which articles belong where, but it's, I, I think in order to make sure that we remain compliant with that contract and not, not give opportunities to, for the, for the hauler to, to fall with us, that's going to be important. So keep your eyes peeled for that. And sort of related, but very different, we're, we're looking at launching a textile recycling program where folks may have an opportunity to put out textiles, so used clothing, things like that, on the same day that their trash would be recycled. So we don't have a lot of information on that yet, but we've, staff has been looking into that, and that may be something that we can, we can roll out in the near future. Just a quick note, the Friends of Endicott, at some point later this year, are hoping to launch a fundraising effort to make improvements to the children's barn, which is starting to show some age in certain places. So nothing imminent, but that, that outreach or communication may start this summer with something probably coming before the board on the other end of the summer. And then just real briefly, we had a meeting back on June 5th. The Chair was able to attend with me. We had a good representation from the North Shore delegation to talk about the water permit that we're in the, that we're in the process of trying to renew, and I think we had an opportunity with our, the consultants who have helped us through our grants in the last couple of years to really explain in an informal, face-to-face setting with the delegation what we're up against, what the data has shown and not shown in terms of the watershed, and it's, it's still going to be a slog, but I think we, we made some good progress in that session, and we heard a lot of support from the delegation for sitting down with the DEP, Environmental Affairs, at the highest levels to really explain the impact that these permits are having on some of the suppliers. So I, I think, you know, obviously, this is a topic we have been discussing, we'll continue to discuss, but that was, that was a productive meeting. That's all I have.
Thank you. Consider the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I'm just going to make note here before we get too far along, the Smith Elementary School Community Info Session will be Thursday, June 20th, 7 o'clock, at the Smith School Media Center. Select one's comments. Bill?
Okay, in the role that I have played for the last 10 or so years, we lost our senior town meeting member, one of the most dedicated community activists I've known in my lifetime. He worked for the town for over 30 years as a firefighter. He was a senior town meeting member, served longest of anyone. He was on the historical bicentennial committee back in the 70s, which I worked with him. He was a founder of the Danvers Alarmless Company, a very dedicated member of the Conservation Committee, a very dedicated member of the Historic District Commission, and for many years, the caretaker of the Rebecca Nurse House. One little thing that people sometimes don't remember about Bob Osgood was that he and his wife Josie gave their house essentially for years to the Danvers YMCA as a fundraiser for a haunted house, and that was a major impact in our community for a long, long time. Bob was kind of a quirky individual, but he was a great guy and a great friend, and I had a lot of time, good times with him over my lifetime, and we're going to miss Bob big time. The other thing is more of a personal, I don't say personal, it's kind of a fantasy level. I did have the chance to have a nice tour with Captain Barry with our new fire truck that we just got in this week. I always love new fire trucks, and this one we had to work on for a number of years to get, but it looks pretty impressive. But I, I'd like to see the town of Danvers put the new tower truck and this new fire truck side by side in a street, and hook up to a hydrant, and find someplace where they can pump out 4,000 gallons of water a minute, because both of these trucks have 2,000 gallon pumps. It may not mean much, but they've got to be careful, they're not going to blowhouse the pot instead of put the fire out sometime, but these are amazing pieces of equipment. And also, all the accessory items on the truck is battery operated, so they don't have to worry about plugging in the power, getting the power set up, and starting a pool engine on a chainsaw and stuff, and I think that's going to be a really interesting feature for the future. Very well thought out.
Thank you. Diane?
I'm also, I have visions of the trucks being up on Bill Street, shooting up at the new houses right now. I'm just fixing the water problem.
Gardner?
Bill has a couple of houses he's willing to volunteer. I just, I'll be brief. As most of you know, Family Festival has begun. We had a big pig out a couple of days ago on Friday. That was great. Tonight's kayak rivet row was canceled due to weather, obviously. We get the food trucking fundraiser tomorrow at Endicott Park. We have Endicott Park Day this Saturday, and the Scoop-a-Bowl and Field Day the following Saturday, all sorts of opportunities in between. Please go to familyfestival.com for more details. I did pick this booklet up in Town Hall, I know they have some at the Senior Center. Also, and one of the ones I'm running is June 30th, is the Sunday Brunch with Sinatra. Breakaway is partnering with us, and you can, if you're a senior, you can get a normally $20 brunch for $7, and we, Family Festival's hired a entertainer, crooner, to sing Sinatra and classics and standards. So look in the book for that, and they have the coupons over at the Senior Center. Other than that, I'm all set.
Thank you. Thank you. So I received actually today a letter from the, from Peter Morandi, Director of Public Health, regarding disposable plastic water bottles, and it reads, Dear Chairman Bennett, during their regular meeting held on June 2nd, 2019, I relayed your proposed voluntary prohibition of bottled water at town meetings. Before even having had the opportunity to request their support, the membership immediately unanimously endorsed this idea. Now Chairman Darkin McLaughlin quickly reminded all present that the town of Danvers provides the best portable water in the area. Evidence suggests that public environmental health is threatened by plastic water bottles, from endocrine disrupting exo-hormones, leaching from plastics, large amounts of non-renewable energy being expended to manufacture and transport the bottles for sale to their ultimate disposal where they persist in the environment for hundreds of years. The Board of Health is posed and eager to assist in a reasonable intervention. You may continue to count on the Board of Health to support this effort and to lead by example. Please let us know how we may further assist Peter Morandi. And Steve did receive a copy of this, and with your permission, he and I will discuss further steps on how to implement some voluntary prohibition of bottled waters. Any, there a problem with that?
Did we discuss that? I don't remember discussing. I remember you saying you wished that we would not bring bottled water, which I didn't.
Okay, good.
But I, and I normally don't, but I just don't remember having this discussion, and I guess I'll wait to see what your rules and regs are, but yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, I'm always for recycling, but I just, I just don't, you know, I was like, I don't want to say yes to anything until I know what it says.
Well, I just said to discuss potential efforts.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, yeah, devil's in the details, and I look forward to seeing the details.
Thank you. Okay. And with that, veterans, if you see a vet, thank them for their service, and if you see an active service person, certainly thank them as well. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? All in favor? Good night, Danvers.
I had Stephen for a student for four years, and a great guy.